I'd like to call to order the March 27, 2006, meeting of the San Carlos City Council redevelopment Agency. Would you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, which is going to be led by some fine young ladies from Notre Dame High School?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you ladies like to give your names and why you're here?
Melissa Earl.
My name is Kate Lanery.
And I'm Kelsey Lomberto, and we're here because we're doing a government assignment on San Carlos city issues.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is changes to the order of the agenda. Do we have any suggested changes by staff?
We have none.
None, okay, council, none. Next item is council communications and announcements. Bob, we'll start with you.
No, I have nothing.
Nothing, okay. Bob, or Tom?
I have a couple items. I attended the Council of Cities last Friday and just report to you that the seat vacated by Don Eaton on A-Bag was filled by Seppie Richardson. The group also decided to appoint a bylaws committee to look over the bylaws, which are somewhat dated, and upgrade them and bring them back to the group. And then there's apparently there's a $5,000 account that the Council of Cities has and some discussion about how that money should be used, and it was agreed that the bylaws committee would make a recommendation on that as well. So you'll probably have some reports on that at the next meeting. And then this afternoon, there was a meeting of the congestion management and air quality committee. And the matter of significance there is a presentation as to how the Transportation Authority will establish the qualifications for projects under the new Measure A. And a series of things were brought up, including reducing congestion, developing and improving regional connections, meeting local mobility needs, enhancing safety, and harmonizing land use and transportation. But the bottom line is that all the projects that will be submitted will be brought under a common view in terms of how it fits these criteria as they are established. So we'll be having more information on that as the time goes on, and this should be within another couple of months, we'll have a pretty good look at how they're going to handle those requests.
Thank you, Tom.
That's it.
Wocominga, do you have any council reports? None, okay. We did meet, Inga and I did meet in a two-plus-two meeting with the San Carlos school board and had a couple items that we discussed, one of which was traffic congestion around the Terra Linda site and some means of mitigating that traffic, possibility of adding a new entry to the school, but that has to be talked about with Belmont. And I was given the assignment to discuss that with Phil Mathewson, which I have brought up to him, but I haven't met with him yet on that issue. And I think that was the, one of the biggest issues we discussed. Inga, do you remember any others from that meeting that came up? I know we talked about fields, but not in great detail. They're simply waiting for us to take a look at that at our council meeting where we will look at fields. Brian, you were at that meeting. Do you recall any other items?
I think we did talk to them a little bit about their upcoming construction improvement at schools this summer, and they're going to give us a report back. And I also believe that we talked a little bit about Park Foundation, and we're going to get some more information about that and healthy cities tutoring. So the next meeting's in June.
June, okay. Thank you very much. At the last council meeting, I had not brought with me information from the breakfast that I had attended with youth and family services, and I wanted to give folks the email address for high school students and middle school students, I suppose, and any youth, actually, who would like to have someone to discuss something with, if you've got an issue you're dealing with and you wanted to go online and talk to somebody online. You can do that by going to, and here's the website, or the, yeah, the website, I suppose, is W-W, the typical triple W, on yourmind.net, and you can check that out if you have any things you would like to discuss online with somebody that you would like some advice from, a peer or something like that. And Barry, I'll pass that on to you as well, so that you can be familiar with that as the Parks and Rec director. The other item was, I attended a, an event of sorts. It was called Mayor's for Meals, and it was put on by the Peninsula Volunteer Association. And among other things that they do is they provide meals to seniors. And the only requirement is that you be age, I believe it's 60 or 65 and older. And in fact, they don't put anything, any limitations on income or anything like that because they realize some seniors, even if they have a decent income, they still would like someone to come by and see them once in a while and visit with them and that sort of thing. So it's open to any senior who would like to receive that service. And if anyone is interested in that, they could always go to their website, which is, again, the triple W, peninsulavolunteers.org. I had the pleasure of delivering two meals to, well, actually, three meals, but two meals, going to two different sites, two different homes, and delivering meals with one of the volunteers from Peninsula Volunteers. And that's it. Those are the reports that I have. So I believe that would bring us to our next agenda item, which is-
You want to talk Matt about-
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we do. Thank you, Tom. One of the items we had on here, and I'd asked to have this put on the agenda, is a discussion amongst us as council members on the attendance at the farmer's market, the hot harvest nights, which is coming up in May and runs through September. Now, last year, did we start that last year? Was that the first year we started that, Inga?
Actually, no. It was the year prior-
Year prior.
-that I started it up. And it started off just a little bit of history. It came out of an idea that we all had, just of getting some representation at hot harvest nights, just of council members, and gave the public an opportunity to talk to council members, to share their opinions, to get information about the city. Last year, it was actually broadened to include some department heads. And so that actually took a lot of the burden off of the council members as well because we could share the booth time, because it does, when you have hot harvest nights every Thursday night, it becomes quite time-intensive to try to move it amongst the council members only. We did also change the times before. It had been from four o'clock until eight o'clock, it seems to me, and we reduced the time down from six, or five to seven, to try to make it a little bit more manageable and less of a burden, not only on the council members, but also on staff. And it seemed to have worked quite well, to pair up a council member or two with one or two city department heads. And so I would actually, I mean, from my perspective, I think it's a wonderful way for the city council to be really approachable. I know, a lot of us know people in the community, but sometimes it's nice for the public to be able to say, "I'm going to go down to hot harvest nights." They're down there anyway, getting their produce or, you know, visiting with their neighbors, and they can swing by the city booth, figure out, you know, find out some information about what's going on, the citywide garage sale, or, you know, other programs, music in the park, things like that, as well as ask questions of staff about, you know, "I've got a pothole in my street," or "Who do I talk to about getting the alley behind my building cleaned up?" That type of thing. So I would encourage the new, well, Brad's not here, but encourage the council to do it again this year. And if it becomes a time, you know, really time-intensive, then maybe we can figure out some way to either shorten it or do it less frequent, maybe only, you know, the first and third Thursdays or something that becomes, you know, more manageable in terms of time.
Thank you, Inga. So I did want to open it up to discussion, then. I realize, Bob, you've never had this assignment, and Tom and-
Actually, I had it a little bit last year when I was running for office. I actually did have it a little bit. But no, I'm more than willing to pull whatever schedule is, you know, once, I mean, I defer to you guys. You did it all last year, whether it should be twice a month, or once a week, or however you want to schedule it. I mean-
I just want to comment, I have, do you think you need two council members?
You know what? I actually don't.
I don't either.
You know, I think originally it was two council members to try to, so they wouldn't be standing there in the booth by yourself, you know, and you wouldn't look kind of like the lonely guy or gal standing there. And it, you know, it actually, the nice thing about having two council members was it actually gave the two council members some time to kind of just talk to each other, you know, outside of a public meeting. And, you know, just become a little bit more aware of what was going on in each other's, you know, lives or whatever, so-
I think the way the schedule, hello? Excuse me. I think the way, the way certain, can I say this, people's jobs and things that are working this year, it probably might be better to just have one, I mean, just so that we could all, I mean, I'd love to have two, but I don't know if schedules will allow that, you know?
I'll throw this out there, because, you know, I was thinking about it, and my preference would actually be to do it, you know, sort of on a every-other-week type of basis rather than every week, and have two council members, because I think there is some value in that. I know when I did it in the past years, lots of times, people that I would know might not know another council member that was standing with me, and so I could introduce them, and it made that connection, that network, you know, much more easily made. And then I also think that it's nice to have, you know, to give staff every other week that time off as well, because I, you know, they do it really outside of their own city hours. And I think that is, from my observation last year, that was, that was a really big benefit, is to be able to get, you know, city staff, put a name and a face and a smile and a handshake on them. And, you know, even if, you know, someone would come up and ask Christine a question that wasn't her, you know, sort of area of expertise, she could direct them in the right place. And, you know, this is a really sort of formidable and imposing building, and, you know, I think people come here for usually not very good things, so, you know, it's putting a more, a more human face on City Hall and in the departments within City Hall. So that, my recommendation would be really to do it fewer weeks, but continue to have the two council members together. And, you know, sometimes it's nice to have staff there with the council members because it's the same thing, you know, gets, it's an opportunity to just have a little bit more of a relaxed, less formal conversation.
Do you think the five to seven will work? I'm just thinking in terms of, with your new schedule, and then Brad coming from East Bay, maybe we want to do from six to eight or something like that?
Well, I think five to seven catches the most number of people, and if, you know, for Brad, who's coming from the East Bay, if he has a hard time getting there at five o'clock, if he comes from six to seven, I think that is just of the same value.
So we'll just try to avoid having you and Brad scheduled together?
Yeah, generally, that would, unless we're like, like special occasion, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and I work locally, so for me to get off and, you know, I just have to know in advance and-
Okay. All right. So we'll do five to seven every other week, and still, we still want to have at least one staff member with us in the booth?
I think, yeah, I think that really would be nice.
Okay. All right. Fair enough. That's what we'll do.
And do we want to try to schedule it so it's the weeks of or the weeks off of council meetings? Just in terms of scheduling? Because I know we all get kind of busy.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a preference?
No.
No, I, I, I'm, you know, I'm here, so not a problem for me.
Okay. Well, let staff figure that out.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, now we do come to item four, which is reports to council from department heads, but I don't see anything on the agenda here.
You have nothing to add?
Nothing to add, okay. So we'll move on. Item five is public comment. This is a time for persons to address the city council on items that are not on the posted agenda. If you're here to speak to us on such an item, you can do so now. And I don't see anybody coming to the mic, so we'll move on to item six, which is approval of the consent calendar. And these items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion unless a member of the council or staff or the public would like to have an item removed for separate action. Council members? None? Staff? None? Okay. I do have just two items I would like to pull, which are the last two, so if I could have a motion for items A through F.
I would move approval of consent calendar items 6A through 6F.
Second?
Roll call.
Councilmember Teagle Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes. Item G is the lease agreement for the Singular Wireless site, and I just had a few questions on that, if there's a fellow here from Singular, I think, right?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Gary Williams, who works with Singular Wireless Company to put in this site, is here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers.
The question I have is, and this is from some experience, not necessarily with Singular, but just with living next door to a wireless site, has to do with maintenance.
Okay.
And if you could talk about what your company's understanding is of access to the site, especially in the wee hours of the morning, for maintenance.
Okay. As you're aware, too, you know, with Singular coming in, we have been at this site previously. We signed a contract back in May of 2002 with the site, but because of, sorry, because of a purchase with AT&amp;T Wireless, the FCC had asked us to liquidate our old sites, which we then sold to T-Mobile, and that's why we're back at this site. But to answer your question specifically, on a maintenance issue, we do ask for a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week period for maintenance. That is only required in case one of our radio units, or we have a small service, or the site goes off-air for some small reason. We'd like to send our techs out at that time to be able to pull out a radio and do that. There are limited times where, like you're saying, that we might need to change an antenna on a tower or something at that point, and that would be preferred to be done from 12, you know, 12:00 PM or, you know, midnight down to the 4:00 AM hour, just because of the service or the amount of people that are on the network. But at that point, we always look for, especially by working in districts, we do not want to, our intention is not to disturb anybody sleeping or doing it at that point. We try to work around those hours, and if so, we then try to go ahead and get approvals from the local jurisdiction to say if we're going to be doing that. In this specific case, as we have done in the past, we've only had one problem with one antenna, and it was a bad antenna at one point. We came out there with, you know, a scissor lift in the, you know, and we set that up with the city prior to that, went up and replaced that antenna in about a half an hour. And from my knowledge, because I do live in San Carlos, there was no, you know, interference with neighbors or anything else, you know, at that point.
To follow-up question, then.
Sure.
There are occasions where unexpectedly, an antenna or a tower might go down, and you have to access it in the wee hours of the morning?
Yeah, but it's very, if you're talking, the tower and the whole site is set up in two modes. One is ground equipment, which is our radio equipment that actually makes the calls, and our receivers or transmitters, which are, antennas are up on the site. The likelihood of the antenna, receiver, transmitter going out is very rare, very frequently, never happens. Sometimes technology changes do, you know, prompt us to go ahead and change those antennas, which we have some, you know, some timeframe to be able to set that up, months, you know, at that point. The only problem that sometimes does happen is the site, because they are radios, computer-driven radios, they do go down. It might mean sending a tech out for 10 minutes inside our ground equipment, coming out, resetting a radio switch, and then turning it back on, which is, there is no noise associated with that at all.
And in order to mitigate things like that happening, does Singular do routine check of the equipment, just, you know, even if there's not a problem, just to check on it?
It averages about once every five weeks, and it takes about 45 minutes for us to go in and check the system out to make sure that we have routine maintenance. Our sites are very, very reliable. We do hardly, we hardly have any sites that ever go down. They are also monitored remotely by our tech team in Pleasanton, and they are checked. So in case there is a problem with the radio, we will go out there during the daytime hours to have a tech work on that. We try not to do any of the radio maintenance, you know, not just between 12 and 4:00 AM. We do it, you know, at any time that it goes down. Sometimes it just happens to happen in the middle of the night.
So the routine maintenance, though, is done during the day?
Between eight and five.
Okay.
Okay. Normal daytime hours, and our techs go out and do that every five weeks.
Probably Barry, I don't know if he told you or not, but the experience in my neighborhood was, again, with a different phone company, more difficult access to the site, but backing up a steep driveway with a crane-
Oh.
...at 2:00 AM, you know, with the, with the reverse mode-
With the-
-bell going off the whole time, yeah. It was, it was not a good thing.
You know, I apologize for it even behalf of-
And it wasn't Singular. Yeah, it was not Singular.
Singular tries to be a very good tenant. I mean, that's what our whole goal is, you know, we're always trying, you know, because we know that this is going to be a long-term agreement, it's a win-win situation, and we, you know, we want to have coverage and we want to do what's right.
Okay. And I would like to point out to my councilmembers, I did read through Section 4, which talks about use and when they can use it, and actually, 4.3 and 4.4 talks about getting approval ahead of time from the government agency, which would be us, and then compliance with our laws as far as, for instance, we have laws that say you can't start construction before a certain time in the morning and so forth, and they have to comply with that with normal construction and maintenance. But if it's an emergency maintenance situation, it's, it can be a little different. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Matt, are you satisfied with the answers?
Do you have some questions?
Nope. I was going to move approval of consent calendar, item 6G.
Thank you.
Can I second it?
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Teagle Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmembers Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes. The next item is the contract with ERA, is that right, Mark? And I apologize, I didn't get through this in time to call you in advance and talk to you about these issues, but I did have some items on here that I thought we might want to talk about that are in this proposal. And I will direct my councilmembers to the items that I'm concerned with or have, just have questions about. And they all have to do with the technical proposal, which is Exhibit A. You know, wait for everyone to get there. And if we look at Exhibit A, which is under item C, which is on the second page, it talks about analyze office, business park, biotech development opportunities. Laura, do you want to come up, just in case you want to answer some questions or so forth as we talk about this? And the-
Just for the audience, this is Laura Snibman, who is our Director of Economic Development. Am I right? Yeah.
Thank you. I was hoping for some discussion, actually. I had some questions on this, and I was hoping my councilmembers would also have some input on this. We're talking about, we're focusing on biotech, and I question if, whether we should be focusing on biotech necessarily, because there may be something else that already exists in San Carlos industry that we could leverage from. One of the things that I think I talked to you about, Laura, on our tour, was the Hillar Aviation Museum and the idea of aeronautics and aeronautics research and so forth, and as an example, or an unmet, unmet community interest that we might leverage. For instance, there's a pretty big interest in this community in performing arts, and I don't know if, you know, if there's anything there that we could do. It might be a long shot, but I just wanted to open it up to our, to the councilmembers if there was any other things, or if they, if, if the council wants to keep it focused on biotech, or do we want to look beyond that?
Can I share a little information about that?
Sure, yeah.
The section there in C is designed to do exactly what you're talking about doing in terms of looking at all different types of businesses related to taxable sales. So there, it is not meant to focus specifically on biotech, but since that is not a very well-developed sector in San Carlos, they were, added some additional look at it. There's also a question in the end of the proposal, it is in Section G-
Mm-hmm.
-under key policy issues, and we have addressed exactly that question. Should we, it says in the proposal, should we even, should we encourage additional biotech industry development? What are the advantages and disadvantages? So the question will be addressed if that is something that would be a benefit to the city of San Carlos, or if we should continue with existing businesses or new businesses.
Okay, thank you. And council, do you have, now that I've raised the issue, do you have any comments on that?
Well, back when we worked on the new draft of the East Bay, or East side-specific plan, we did kind of focus on biotech as being a possibility as the industry kind of moved down the peninsula, so that's maybe one reason why it's highlighted a bit more than others. But I agree with Laura, as long as there's an open mind and a broad perspective as to what, what works, and, you know, what, what's in the industry, what's in the, in the development mode, what, where are we going in the next years? We keep a focus, a broad focus, we should come out with, with a good result.
I tend to agree with the language that's in this, this exhibit, in that it's broad enough. I think we have to be very cautious as a council of trying to dictate what the market will do. At the end of the day, you know, this, or five years ago, 10 years ago, it was technology development. Five years ago, the last five years, we've seen a lot of biotech development. I've heard of nanotech development and, you know, so all the buzzwords are out there. And I think as long as we're continuing to support and encourage flexible types of development on our east side that are going to bring in revenue and jobs and provide that balance within San Carlos, I think that, that we should be looking and open to all of those things. And in fact, Matt, we do actually have quite a large population of biotech companies within San Carlos. A lot of them are sort of incubator types of spaces, but, you know, it'd be nice to be able to look at actually trying to find some spaces where we can actually aggregate some properties together, because right now, companies seem to get to a certain size within San Carlos and then have no place that they can move to once they start to expand, so they have to move out of San Carlos. And I, I would certainly encourage that we, we consider that in this proposal as well.
As I read this, I, I guess I just saw the implication that it was a broad one. As Laura just said, I think that, I don't think there's anything that's, I assume, right, Laura? There's nothing off the table here, everything's on the table, and-
That's the intent. We'd be happy to modify it to make it more clear.
These are the highlights that they had. That's, that's how I interpreted it. So I, I would hope that they would come through with, with some broad, broad, broad points.
There is a, there's an area on the retail side, and we're very, very high and very heavy on home improvement, carpet stores and tile stores and lumber stores and so forth.
Correct. And that's some of the data that they'll be looking at and reviewing as our existing base.
Yeah, and that, you know, that tends to make sense in terms of expansion as well. So, you know, that may be another focus point, and yet you don't want to be limited to it, so.
Okay. Well, if the language, if the council's fine with the language, I read it as being focused, but it, and what I'm getting from you, Laura, and I think what the rest of the council is hearing is-
The intent is broad.
The intent is broad. As long as we keep it that way, and as long as ERA knows that that's our intent-
We'll be sure to communicate that.
I think that's sufficient. Okay.
If Mr. Lee comes up with something brand-new that no one else has thought of, that can really spark our, our process for the next 20 years, we'll-
We'll look at it.
We'll be looking at it.
Definitely, okay. Staying on business park development-
Sorry, Matt, what page are you on?
I'm still on the same page, page two of Exhibit A, under item C. Now, there's a, a number of bullet, bullet points about development for business park, and I thought if we're going to look at sites within San Carlos, as it says there, that have potential for office and business park development, then we might want to look at the cost-benefit analysis of developing with the business sites, parks and recreation, and open space opportunities to be included. So if we're going to redo anything, we might be including in that some open space and some park area to go with any redevelopment that might happen. Barry, do you want to get up and just have a, can you say a few words about that from, I'm picking up on going down to the Parks Conference and hearing a few items on this, maybe Barry would like to talk to it briefly?
Yes, at the recent Parks Recreation Conference, the awards banquet, we were talking about economic benefit of Parks Recreation, and Parks Recreation can certainly support economic development. In fact, there's a study, a university study done in Colorado, the number-one reason that small businesses move to relocate to a community is Parks Recreation and Open Space, and there's other examples around the country. So really, that, that goes hand in hand. People want to be in an area where there's good amenities, and Parks Recreation and Open Space are part of those valuable amenities.
So just to be clear, Matt, what you're asking for is that we basically look at the ROI, or the ROI that a developer would be looking at as request, and that they dedicate a certain percentage of their land to open space or parks and rec type of use?
Well, I'm looking at the fourth- Well, I'm looking at the fourth bullet down, sites, and it says to, the investigation will include sites within San Carlos that have potential for office, business park, and biotechnology development. So yes, I'm thinking that if we were going to look at certain sites for redevelopment to become potential for office, business park, and biotech, that we would look at the cost-benefit analysis of having included in the development space, open space, that would, that could be used for parks. Not anything on a grand scale, but just like we have downtown, that's at least my thinking. Barry, you can chime in on this. You know, downtown, we have just a small little place where our store used to be and is no longer, and we made a downtown park. It has great benefit to the downtown. Is that, am I on the right track, Barry?
Yeah, studies have shown that particularly for retail, the longer people stay in an area, the more money they spend, so Laurel Street Park, in that regard, is an economic development park. I think that this company, taking the big-picture approach, will probably include the benefits of Parks Recreation, Open Space, but I think it's a valuable piece for them to consider. Certainly, you're not going to make 50% of it or anything, because then you lose your benefit, but there is benefit to the businesses that come in if there is a certain amount of open space and parks available, so.
And I'm not saying we would necessarily do it, Inga, I'm just asking, maybe ERA would want to look at that as a...
Well, I'm just, the focus of this document, really, and keeping in mind that the more things that we ask them to do, the higher the price tag gets. So, you know, really, the purpose of this is to examine the long-term economic and market forces at work on the peninsula to understand San Carlos's opportunities for the next two decades. If we stay focused on that purpose, sure, there's a lot of nice-to-haves in terms of open space and parklands and things like that. I think all of that should be done, or really more discussed at either a council level or at even a citizens advisory level, to say, you know, okay, we can either get X amount of tax revenue off a potential site, or we can look at converting it to parkland. But I don't necessarily agree that that's part of what we're tasking ERA to do, and if we stay very focused on the economic analysis, which is what we've asked them to do, I think that we should not ask them to go off and to try to do an ROI on something like, which would be very hard to quantify, I think, the economic benefit of 10% of open space within a given project, or 15% of open space within a given project, because the ROI for each project is going to be completely different based on the density, based on the use, based on the amount of parking, based on the location, based on a lot of factors. So that could really become very quickly sort of a rat's nest, and really not give us, I think, the information that, I think, what you're suggesting, which is a good idea, is necessarily sort of their area of expertise.
Any other comments?
No, I think Inga's probably right. I think the time to do that is during the development process, when you're looking over a plan, and there may be excess space, and maybe it's next to a creek, maybe on a hillside, it may be space that really can't be developed but could be used or committed to public use and improved for that purpose. But that's more of a decision at the time the plan comes in, based on the site characteristics and so forth. But I think we ought to keep a focus on it, and to the extent we can do it, we should add public use areas where it's appropriate.
Bob?
I sort of agree also, in that what their task to do is X, and when it comes to us, if they can identify some areas, I believe that then we definitely need to get into Y. I think it's an excellent idea, but I'm not sure that these folks need to be tasked with that. Hopefully, they can come in with some projects that are going to kick some funds to the city and we can work with, just like we would work with, I wasn't on the Planning Commission, but I'm sure when Home Depot came in and when other places came in, Inga was probably there then, and Tom, to then make the development agreement and work with those folks then. But I think this document seemed to me pretty good, the way it was.
I'm going to jump, I have some other items too, under retail, but because of what's been said, I want to jump to, well, I had the same comment on Item E, that I could see some benefit, that if we're going to develop for hotel, same thing, we should look at opportunities and look at the cost-benefit of open space if we're going to put in a hotel, for same reason. And then under Item G, discussion of key policy issues, I wanted to add in what strategy will give the best fiscal return and enhance quality of life for our citizens and businesses, because, and that's where this park and recs idea fits in, actually. And perhaps if we look at Item G, which is on the following pages under this exhibit, I think that's on page four, there are the four bullet points there about the discussion of key policy issues, and perhaps that's where we fit it in, so that it's more of a broad topic, but not specific to any one of these other topics. I just think it's important, counsel, that as we, at the same time we're looking at economic matters, we not forget quality-of-life issues. I don't think we should get our focus off of that.
Yeah, again, with sort of all due respect, I mean, what G is, is there to provide analysis in our discussion of key policy issues related to economic development. I don't think what you're talking about, in our discussion, when we receive back this report, which I'm assuming will come through, economic development, and staff will look at it, and they will put their own San Carlos department flavor on the results coming back that we precluded from looking at all of those different things that you talked about. Again, we need to be very clear that what is before us right now is a document for a company for $60,000 to do some economic development market research for us. And I think that we need to stay very focused and keep them very focused on the pure economic development opportunities. When it comes before us, we, as a council, obviously are going to have our own perspectives of, you know, perhaps more parkland or more open space, or there may be some, you know, we've had people come before us with Preserve the Creek types of things, or it may be that, you know, one of us or somebody may be opposed to, you know, throwing out all the manufacturing and having it, replacing it all with, you know, five-story, six-story office buildings. But again, we need to have sort of a benchmark that we've asked these consultants to do, and if we can keep them focused, I think they will do, they'll be much more successful, having been a consultant, much more successful at actually returning back some results that then, or some analysis that then we can take into consideration as we contemplate what should happen over on the east side and provide direction to staff around, and to our city manager around economic development. So I would not recommend making any changes to Exhibit A.
Well, I'm not finished, so keep going here on Exhibit A. There is under the, under Item C, a statement that they will look at opportunities or actions essential to retaining or attracting firms that generate substantial business-to-business taxable sales, and there's not a similar statement under Item D as far as retail strategy. So I had added that we might look at opportunities or actions essential to retaining the retail that we have and/or attracting the retail that we may want to have.
Well, I guess I look at retail as business-to-consumer sales, and Item C as business-to-business type of opportunities. So I can imagine that would be why they wouldn't necessarily have a similar statement under retail, because generally, retail, especially in the economic development arena, means something very specific. So I would look at a Home Depot or a Best Buy, or an Albertson's, or Brunner's as a retail type of opportunity. I wouldn't look at a, you know, some of the plumbing supply stores that we have as retail. I mean, Laura, feel free to...
We do have very different sectors, and we've done some initial tax analysis of sales in San Carlos, and the business-to-business sector is an important component in sales tax. Retail sales are considered sales to anyone in or out of the city, and so you don't need to specify the business-to-business component within the retail strategy.
Repeat that last part?
You don't need to specify business-to-business component within the retail strategy, because retail is...
Well, I know, but why wouldn't we look at opportunities or actions essential to retaining retail? In other words, what might we do to keep the retail businesses that we have here? Is there anything that we're doing that causes them to close up shop? We certainly had enough, or a number of those kinds of occurrences. We have a number of...
Right, we can absolutely add that language. It says, in the opening sort of paragraph under D, it says, "What types of retail development will likely succeed and where such new development or renovation should be located?" So we can expand on that to clarify that we would like that to include opportunities and actions essential to retaining or attracting those. We can specify that more clearly.
I think we should.
Sure.
Does anybody else have a comment on that? Do you see where I'm coming from on that?
Yeah, I think you're okay on that.
Okay. Bob?
It's not Bob.
The last item I had was, I didn't see much, actually, I have two more items. I didn't see much in here in terms of, when it was looking at, and it talked about the, what's the term that's used, the stakeholders? And on page one, it talks about who the stakeholders are. And I don't see anything that relates to just the people who live in San Carlos. People who live in San Carlos are paying for this report, and there's nothing in here that says there's going to be any effort to talk to the citizens of San Carlos and say, you know, "What kind of businesses do you want to see? What kind of retail would you like to see?" And I am serious about this, I think we need to look at where we might have holes in our retail.
I think the intent was that the Economic Development Advisory Commission has been appointed by the city council to represent a number of different sectors within San Carlos, residents included in that. And so in terms of keeping the cost down, the proposal was to work with EDAC as a representative of the community at large. If the council would like to change that and expand that, I am fairly confident that the cost will increase, but we can do that. EDAC is also public meetings, so public members will be, will do outreach and invite people to the EDAC meeting when they get the input, so that's one opportunity available.
That would be an opportunity. Maybe what we could do is specifically charge EDAC with reaching out to the community and make sure that that gets done, that there is a substantial documented effort to reach out to the community and get some input in that regard. I think that would be necessary and important. Mark?
Through the chair, I mean, I think we should also recognize that this is intended to be somewhat of a technical study to determine what the market potential is. We have as another task, an economic development plan, where we will have an opportunity if the council wishes for us to reach out to the community and see what the desires of the community might be. We can either do that through EDAC or through the community at large. When we've done economic development plans in other communities in the past, we have had an outreach program such as that, so that you have a good understanding of what it is that the people in your community might be looking for. But at the same time, we need to have the professionals tell us what the market potential really is for this community, so we can balance the reality against the wishes of the community.
My only concern, Mark, is, and I hear what you're saying, my only concern is that professionals tend to deal when, in generalities, they look at, you know, other cities and compare us to other cities, which is all fine and good, but we also have to recognize that we're a unique city with a unique population and makeup of citizens, and I think we have to be mindful of what they may desire, and after all, again, they're paying the bill here, so I think some sensitivity to their wants and needs is in order.
I think what my intent was to say that we agree with you.
Uh huh.
It's just a matter that there's another vehicle to get there.
Okay.
That is another part of the plan for, you know, the next stage of this entire package. I mean, this is only one part, you know, it's kind of the foundation, it's the technical foundation of what the market capacity is in this community, in this area, and then we'll follow that up with an economic development plan that will reach out to the community as one of its components.
That's good to know. That's not in the staff report, so there's no way to really know that. And like I say, I didn't really get to talk to you, and I apologize ahead of time of the meeting on this. Then the last item I wanted to highlight to the council is under, let me get to my self-made report here, under Business and Management Issues, which is the last page, page five. It says that, where is this? Excuse me, I got ahead of myself. I meant to go to Item F. Apologize for the delay there. Under Item F, it says that in addition, they would like the development potential in terms of mixed uses and so forth. I'm on the bottom of page three of six to eight strategic parcels within San Carlos selected by the Economic Development Housing Director, and I was wondering if the council would like to actually have some input on that before it's decided what six to eight parcels. And in fact, I thought we might like to give opportunity to EDAC and to the Planning Commission to review the recommendation and then have it finalized by the council.
Through the chair, you know, again, the difficulty I always have with consultants is, can we do the work ourselves? And I think in this kind of a situation, we can't, and so that's why I'm not, I think in the future, you might be seeing me come off on some of these consultant issues in a different way than I am tonight. This, I think, as Mark said, is a real technical issue. We, if we're going to hire this person, let's hire him, and then they do their job, but they're not, we're not going to limit what they come up with. They may pick six to eight here, and we may pick six to eight here, EDAC may pick six to eight here, and some other folks may pick six to eight here. We could be here a while, trying to figure out what six to eight parcels we want, or 30 parcels. I just, I just think if, I mean, Laura, I assume you worked with them developing this contract, and...
That's correct. And the intent here was that through the process of analysis that they go through to develop, to look at retail strategy, business taxable sales, hotel market, that type of thing, they are actually going to be helping to find where they think some of the best potential is, and for those particular sites. So they would need confirmation from staff, but it will be an iterative process that will come through from them and from EDAC and working with the city manager, so this is not sort of a random selection of parcels.
And again, even after they pick them, we may think that some of the ones they pick are great and maybe not, but it'll certainly all come to us.
Correct.
So I just, I think, again, your point's well-taken, Matt, but I believe that we're a little ahead of ourselves if we try to get involved at this stage of this development. That's my opinion.
I tend to agree with Bob. I mean, it just seems to me that none of us up here sitting in this dais are economic development specialists, unless, well, Bob maybe, because he's done enough development. But I would certainly defer to, especially at this early stage in the game, to staff and to the professionals. If we didn't think that they were suitable to do the job, we shouldn't be doing a contract with them in the first place. And I can appreciate what you're saying, Matt, about inviting the public and everything like that, but again, you know, I think we just need to focus on, let's get the data, and then what we do with the data, we'll figure that out. It may be that we, as a council, decide that it should go through a couple of public hearings. We may decide as a council that, you know what, we're going to look at it, we're going to fold it into whatever we do with the east side specific plan. It may bring new opportunities to light, it might bring just us be able to give direction to staff, saying, you know what, go after and try to get these types of businesses here in San Carlos. It may be that we actually do something as a council to modify some ordinances that would facilitate or allow more readily the development of those types of parcels into the uses that we want. So there's a whole boatload of opportunities, I think, that may come out of this, but just in the interest of getting through this and getting the data back, I would strongly recommend that we allow them to go forward and not try to sort of fine-tune or wordsmith this document. I think at the end of the day, if we don't have enough information, we'll ask staff to go back and request further information, and at that point, we'll be willing to pay some more money. But if we change, modify this exhibit at this point, Matt, basically what it will do is it will go back to them, to the consulting company, to rebid, and then it's going to come back to us again, so... So--
Indeed. Inga?
Always, that is the process. That's why we have a staff report and document, and we have a chance to look at it, we can make comments--
I'm sorry. I--
And we can send it back.
That wasn't my point at all. It was just simply that I would, I'm prepared to make a motion to approve this document as is and move it forward.
Laura, I want to make sure I understand this process then on item F. Because it, when I read it, it says, "We will comment on the likely development potential." Is that ERA?
Yes.
And so you are, you will be, you as the director will be providing to them the six to eight parcels for them to look at?
It's until, we've talked about this, how this is going to work. And the intent is that as this process goes forward with the earlier items that they're going to be doing, there may be some sites that we want to look at. So the city authorization, as it's written, would come from the Economic Development Housing Director. You can change that authority, if you'd like, to the city manager or someone. So there's going to be, working very closely with the consultant to take their recommendations and sites that we have. For instance, on our East Side Specific Plan, we have a couple of landmark sites. So we might want to take a close look at that.
Well, I'm dismayed at my council's attitude on this, because I do think we should take leadership on this particular item and looking, and not necessarily picking the sites, but having an opportunity to review what's going on, the sites that are picked, do we like them, do we not like them? We are leaders, and we should be leading and having ideas and providing those ideas to staff and not just sitting back and waiting for staff to bring us information and then saying yes or no on that information. I would like to see us more involved, but since we don't want to be more involved, I will just let it pass.
I will make a motion to approve Consent Calendar Item 6H.
I think, I think our involvement comes at the next phase, though, Matt. This is a, this is a development of data, raw data. And we've seen a number of these reports from the RI. I think they're very good. Consistently, they do good work. But it's raw data. It's material that we can work with going forward in the development program. So I think we're on the right course. And once we get the report, we'll be well-prepared to move forward with the next phase.
And I can respect that, Tom, but I just have seen so often when raw data becomes gospel moving forward. But it is what it is, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Tegelordi?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Davids?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes. Okay, that brings us to the next item, which is 7A, unfinished business, consideration of strategic plan objective to advertise and schedule interviews for city council appointment of an ad hoc creek and watershed advisory committee. Mark?
Honorable mayor, members of the City Council, this item was before you at the last meeting, and at that point, it was decided that Mayor Grokot and Councilmember Davids would meet with proponents of this committee proposal. And we've updated the staff report towards the close there with staff's understanding as to some of the concepts that were discussed by the council subcommittee with the proponents. That being that it be a subcommittee and ad hoc committee with a 12-month duration to study creek setbacks, flooding, the interagency efforts towards creek regulation and sedimentation. We've tried to give you some sense of, within the earlier report, about some of the staffing requirements in order to provide staffing to such a subcommittee. If the Council decides to move forward with this, we would suggest that at the staff level, we try to segregate, if you will, the committee tasks into manageable areas that could be staffed by the appropriate staff members, whether that be building and code enforcement, or for some of the creek setback issues and planning, perhaps with some of those issues, and with public work staff for some of the flooding and sedimentation issues. I mean, the issues here are broad enough, I think, that it will require some input and staff support in all of those areas, and it might be something that maybe we focus three months in one area, three months in another area. What we would be looking for, again, is additional feedback with respect to what the deliverables might be, so that we can keep the committee focused, that they feel like they're accomplishing what it is that the council is looking for them to accomplish, and that we have something we can use at the end of the day.
Mark, if I can jump in with a question right away. What I'm hearing you say about staff is to, rather than have, when there's meetings of this committee, should it exist, rather than have Public Works there, planning there, building there at all the meetings, to use them in an economical fashion on an as-needed basis per the agenda for whatever the meeting is.
And I think, I think that's true. We would have to work with the committee to decide, for example, that if we're going to, you know, we're going to address the flooding issue, that maybe that'd be the issue for a certain period of time. Maybe that'd be the issue for three months, and public work staff be dedicated to providing the support for that three-month period. I mean, it sounds like we've got four areas here, and you run the subcommittee, so you'll have to give me more additional information, if you will. But it sounds to me like we've got four areas, if the idea is that we proceed over a month or a one-year duration, that there would be three months for each of the tasks. I don't know if they're equally weighted in the, in the proponents' mind or in the council's mind, but we at the staff level are looking for some way to manage the workload and be productive at the same time.
Okay. Just a quick comment on that, and I know--
Are we still taking questions?
Yes, but I'm clarifying a point here. Something that Tom and I talked about when we met was, we really like the idea that council and staff has come up with a strategic plan to work, and as much as we can with committees like this. Tom, you can chime in here if you, jump in if you'd like, but to, that they have a strategic plan. So their first task would bring us a strategic plan, and that would, I think, do what you're asking for, is give some direction, and then you know where your staff would need to be used per the strategic plan. Is that, is that helpful?
Well, I guess my, my question would be whether or not we would not need to identify that prior to advertising for people to sit on the committee. I mean, I guess our thought was that we would define what the committee's role would be, and then we would advertise, find the people that would be appropriate to try and accomplish those tasks. And if I heard you correctly, that maybe the thought is, is that we select the people and have them still try and identify what the task or the plan is, or--
I think, I think, Mark, we're looking at the, having been through the meeting and discussed this, we're looking at the four principal items that, that are on the report, the setbacks, flooding, interagency, and sedimentation. Those are four issues that we can put our arms around and are severe problems. With that in mind, as the group comes together, and it would be a group of five or seven, should be about the right size, they would, at their first meeting, come up with a work plan as to how they want to address these. So they might want to take sedimentation first, and they've got some people on the committee who can deal with that and who can make interagency contacts and develop information through Fish and Game, County, whatever it might be. And so they might take a lead with that, and then move on after two or three or four months, whatever the timeframe, into the flooding issue or into the, you know, to the setback issue. So there'd be kind of a roadmap of where they're going to go over time, so that staff could anticipate what, what facilities they need to provide and support they need to provide to try to get the information that's required. So that's the idea. It was more of a work plan than a strategic plan, but they would be initially limited to these items. These are what we're really interested in. And they would come back and develop a work plan as to how they'd get this solved. And I think, frankly, rather than us deciding what they ought to be doing when, based upon the composition of the committee, which is unknown, it's probably a better shot for them to do it. But I would suggest that when they do have this meeting, they return to us with this work plan. This is what we want. This is what the council should know that we are about and what we want to accomplish and how we want to get there. So we'll have a report from them early on as to where they're going to take the process and how they're going to schedule it.
So now, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Mark, or maybe Brian, you've got the history, or maybe even Bob, do you remember last time that creek setbacks were done? I know I was on Planning Commission at the time when the whole issue of creek setbacks was studied and went through the public hearing process, and it probably was in the last five years or so, five or six years, because I've been on council for four now.
It's actually been before the Planning Commission and staff a couple of times. I think as late as, seems to me, a year ago, when we looked at the issue and decided on some interpretation of the, you know, top of bank and creek setback issue and how to interpret our current ordinance. And maybe it was--
Right.
--five or so years before that, that we had, you know, went through the regulations again.
Yeah, I think there's been extensive work by both Jack Aiello in building and Liz Collin in planning and Parveet Matarre in Public Works about that issue several times. You're right. Councilmember Tegelordi.
And then a follow-up question is, what percentage, or what, I guess, square footage or percentage of creeks actually lie within a city-controlled area, that we could actually have any control over this?
That's been a problem in the past. A lot of this is private property, yeah.
I would say probably almost 100% is on private property in one way or the other.
Correct. And that's been a problem, yes.
So would it be, again, and I'm mindful of staff's time, and the 17 subcommittees that are already, or 17 commissions, committees, and boards and subcommittees that are already being staffed by staff, and I'm also considerate of the budget constraints, would it be staff's recommendation that then, that we actually pull creeks off of this and focus them on a more specific area, perhaps, to look at perhaps just flooding in South Laurel? Or is that actually going to then sort of blossom into needing to have consultants and experts come in and spend the time to do the analysis to come up with a recommendation that in the end of the day, we may not be able to fund anyway?
That's a loaded question.
It is a loaded question.
And that's one of the reasons that when I present the report, I'm trying to get additional feedback for exactly what the deliverable and what the intent is. Because the flooding issue, part of our strategic plan was to propose a drainage master plan, for example. Well, engineers prepare drainage master plans. And to appoint a citizens committee to look at flooding issues is, you know, we need to understand the makeup of the committee, the role of the committee, and how we plug that into the storm drainage master planning process. And so that's why we're trying to get a handle on what the, what the committee's objective is. And I have to admit, we didn't fully understand when the committee was originally proposed that we were looking at addressing the flooding issue per se. We, you know, Mr. Matarre is working on that issue. We are putting a budget proposal together for the preparation of a storm drainage master plan. There may very well be ideas. One of the things that, one of the things that we've heard at the staff level, for example, are the non-structural approaches, the non-engineered approaches to addressing the flooding and drainage issues. And that might be the creation of native habitat areas or natural areas that can hold water or retain water for some period of time as a potential option for addressing or contributing to solutions for, for the drainage and flooding problems. Takes a lot of property. It requires some property acquisition, if I fully understand the nature of this. You know, I've seen where we've tried to create in other areas, drainage areas that can double as parks, for example, that can hold large amounts of water. And it might be an interesting way to approach this particular issue. The thought was as well, if there is a committee of citizens or others who are proposing this, maybe if we could get our arms around it, we could give that then to the engineers and put a cost to it and try to determine the cost benefit. How much water can we actually store? What will it actually do at the end of the day in terms of actually impacting the flooding problem that we currently have?
So in your opinion, I mean, do we have the citizens that would have those areas of expertise to be able to advise the experts on a flooding or a master drainage plan?
There may be citizens in the community that have that kind of expertise.
So if we were to focus strictly on that particular issue, we would want to recruit for the commission that area of expertise?
If that was the desire, that we were going to attempt to have an engineer or a quantitative analysis from this committee, then we would have to have somebody on the committee that could provide that kind of technical expertise or support.
But it sounds like really, at the end of the day, I mean, that's not the, the best use of citizens' time, really. And I don't think that that was the intent of what this commission was going to be. So that's sort of, kind of knocked out creek setbacks and flooding. The next item is this interagency efforts towards creek regulations. Now, if we were to have a citizens' subcommittee or commission that was appointed to do that, would then, in order for them to be effective, would we have to authorize them to act on behalf of the city in terms of having meetings or negotiations about creek regulation? And I guess it goes back to my point. I mean, are there things that we should be regulating in terms of creeks that Department of Fish and Game aren't already doing, or that we would actually have some control over?
We, we have, for example, through our Public Works Department, a cooperative effort with officials from the city of Redwood City in approaching Fish and Game for certain proposals to, to work within the creek habit, the creek area. Those are the, you know, those are areas that the staff are working cooperatively and then approaching Fish and Game for potential solutions. This committee, if it were selected, may wish to approach other cities or may wish to approach Fish and Game, but without council authorization or stature, they may not have access as easily as a, as a city committee might, or as easily as, you know, official city representatives might.
Yeah, that was my, my concern. And then the last item in terms of segmentation, and this may be an area where we actually may, there may be opportunities to tighten up sort of what we're doing in terms of runoff. But isn't the segmentation and a lot of that controlled by the NPDES in terms of the regulations that restrict what we need to do, especially in terms of like construction, for example, to prevent runoff into the bay and things like that? Is that, is that a similar type of thing, is what I'm reading, the segmentation?
I believe so, but I, again, I was not involved in the direct discussions and slide, I can't--
Bob's looking like he wants--
I wasn't there either, but I know from talking with Parveet, sedimentation, as far as Public Works is concerned, is the silt and mud that drift down the creeks and fill up the channel and help cause flooding.
And that's actually because of the regulations that I heard from, was it mosquito abatement and just the trouble they have in going through and trying to keep the creeks clean for mosquito? I mean, it seems to me that the state highly controls what can be done in and out of creeks. And I know, for example, some of the flooding in the Harbor Industrial Area and alongside of 101 right there at Holly are, in fact, due to the fact that the city cannot go in and clean out because of the state regulations and the local regulations. I guess my point to my fellow council members is, I've gone through this list, and I don't have a clear idea of what this committee would do, that we don't have staff or that isn't somehow already being done. And if I'm not clear on what this committee would do, I don't know that we can adequately find, advertise, and appoint citizens to a committee to do something that would be in one of these four areas. I mean, clearly flooding is an issue, we all know that, but I don't think that there's going to be a citizens' committee that's going to be able to tell our Public Works and master drainage planners how to fix flooding in South Laurel. And I would, I would like to see that come off the list. In terms of creek setbacks, again, that's been rehashed time and time and time again through the public hearing process. I think, you know, if we, if we look through all of the things that planning staff has to do this year and next year with PAF and everything else that's upcoming and the upcoming budget constraints, I would be kind of hesitant to move forward on this.
Having met for a couple hours on this, let me give you my response.
Please do.
On the setback issue, it's my opinion, it's my understanding, that despite the best efforts of Matt and Don Eaton over a period of 12 or 18 months, meeting with Jack and talking about building issue, there are substantial questions as to what the setback from creek issue is all about. And we talk about it 25-foot, but is that from the top of the bank? And where do we start at the top of the bank? And can you really not do anything within 25 feet? Or maybe you build a deck, or maybe a fence, or maybe not, a cement deck, maybe a wood deck? You know, there's so many open issues about how we affect the property rights of others by having an arbitrary rule that is undefined, that we felt that this was an opportunity for people to come together and put some definition on that 25-foot rule. Where does it start? How far does it go? And what can you do within it and so forth? Now-- Now, if I'm wrong in terms of the problem that I perceive with the building department, then we'll step back. But if there's an open issue, this is an opportunity for people to talk through it and to come up with a recommendation. On the flooding, the problem is that we keep coming up with the flooding issue. What do we do about it? And I know Parvise is working on it, and I know other people are working on it, but it seemed to me that if the committee is formed, the committee can summarize the action to date. They can not come up with necessarily a decision as to what can happen, but they can facilitate the process of communicating with the community with letting the people in South Laurel know what's happening. I don't think we do a very good job of that at the city level. And as try as we will to keep our process and our cures ahead of the next flood, there are issues that continue to happen. And I think this committee could evaluate that, could discuss it with staff, could communicate it to the public, and I think that's of some benefit. The interagency efforts, there are a lot of agencies involved. We have Pogus Creek, which pretty much is our own, although the county is involved in the unincorporated area of Devonshire, and the state is involved as the water hits the bay. The Belmont Creek, there's only a small part of that is ours. We talked about that before. What is the real condition of the Belmont Creek? And is it possible to trap some of that water before it backs up at industrial and beyond? I don't know that we've talked to Belmont about that. I think this committee could and could review that as to what their plans are in terms of some capture basins or whatever upstream, if that's appropriate. But it's a process that we can get into and begin discussion, the same with Cordillares Creek with Redwood City and the state. The sedimentation, I just can't believe, I know I've heard it, I just can't believe we can't do something about it. And perhaps this committee is a group that can stimulate politicians, can get some feedback from Sacramento, from the federal government. What can we do? You know, when you drive down Old County Road and you look past Kellymore and Pep Boys and you see Pogus Creek and you see how sedimented it is, and you also see that the reeds have been cut. Well, I heard it one time, you can't do anything with the creek, including cutting the weeds, but they've been cut, or looked like they've been cut. And I guess my point is, we don't know. And we assume that we can't do these things, perhaps we can't. But it seems to me that at a committee of intended people who are concerned about creeks and concerned about water and are willing to take the lead and talk to agencies can do us no harm. So I see things happening here that aren't going to happen without them. And so I, you know, I'd prefer that we give them a charter and allow them to go ahead and take a look at the result.
You know, a lot of times it's difficult when certain, as I said on the last issue, I thought it was a very, very technical issue for the first step, and that's why I voted for that, you know, contract. But it's going to come back to us, and we're going to have input. We have EDAC to look at it. We have Planning Commission. We have a lot of individual folks in the community that can look at it. On this one, I think it's a question of transparency. And as Tom mentioned, we have professionals, and I'm not, I don't espouse to be an engineer in any way, shape, or form, that know a lot about creek setbacks and flooding and some of these other items. And believe me, I wouldn't even propose that I have the knowledge to speak to this. But having said that, the transparency to let people, and these are, you know, folks that I would hope that we select if this is approved tonight on this commission, that have a different spin on it. As Tom said, what are some of the things maybe over here that maybe someone didn't think of? If we come up with one idea, just one idea out of this thing, it might be something that might help everybody. And then again, we might have no ideas. But until we try it, I don't think we're going to have a chance to know that. So I would tend to support this issue as long as we have a situation where I see the duration is approximately 12 months. I think as Tom said, perhaps, or perhaps Matt and Tom both said, you have three months, three months, you know, split it up so that you're not just scattered, you know, scattered because you can easily get scattered. And secondly, to have some sort of a control on staff time because you could make this a full-time job for everybody on our staff. And that would be, and then I would speak to your point there, Inga, and I agree with you there. We have got a ton of stuff coming down the pike. We have to make sure that there's control so that this isn't all of a sudden the 800-pound gorilla that wanders in and we aren't able to take the rest of the stuff. But I would support this as long as we have some control on staff time and that, again, I really believe it's a transparency issue that we can really, we might be able to come up with one idea. If we can come up with one, I think it'd be a great, great situation. And I would be ready to call the question anytime unless there's more details we need to get into.
You know, actually, I would like just to talk a little bit about the composition of the commission then, especially as it relates to the discussion on creek setbacks. And I think to really do that issue justice, we certainly need to solicit and try to find people who actually live on the creek and get their opinion because it's all well and good for someone who doesn't live anywhere near a creek to try to tell other people what they can and cannot do with their property. But I think it's twofold. It's an opportunity to educate homeowners who do live along the creek, which I think education is always good. And it also will bring some balance to that discussion because, again, you know, having sat on Planning Commission and seen it come through, I mean, this is not a light issue. It's certainly gone back and forth. You always have to balance the right and the opportunity for development against the environmental perspective, and that seems to be where the rubber meets the road in many of these things. So I would like to recommend that, you know, we look at the composition of this committee where perhaps we have, you know, two people who live along a creek as part of the criteria, that we have one or two people who actually have some knowledge of flooding or flooding solutions, perhaps engineers or someone that might have some area of expertise in that area. And then I would like to see probably, you know, two people who represent what I would consider sort of the watershed proponents, the people who are in favor of preserving the creeks. I know we've got a couple of people within our community who have done a great job of just even bringing before this board, you know, handouts and things like that about the importance of creeks within suburban or urban areas. And then finally, kind of just leave one space to kind of be at large, you know, so for something we haven't thought of. Because I think that's going to bring the right balance to this committee to really be able to objectively view or review some of these issues.
Yeah, I think that's a good outline. We also want to consider developer builder type person who's affected by the creek process. And just to get someone who's involved in it from the perspective of construction development.
Somebody who lives on the creek and is a developer type, so.
There probably are a few of them.
We might be able to get two in one if we can.
As on some of these others, too.
Right.
So.
I would say seven is, at least seven.
And hopefully that would be a good working group. And I agree with Councilwoman Tiggle Doherty on some of the items. And again, some people may have a dual.
That may be, and, you know, we'll see when the applications come in. And then I would also like to restrict this to, you know, sort of a nine or a 12-month period of time with them to come back to council so that we make sure that it's not consuming too much of staff time and just give, you know, sort of updates, progress reports, that type of thing with respect to the progress that they've made or any recommendations or any findings that they have.
We didn't see it that they would divide up their work and report back to us with each segment. It's not inherently.
And it may be that, you know, that they don't actually come before a council meeting. It's just that a recommendation gets out and gets put in our packets and we can read it. And if we have questions, defer to the appropriate staff person who's handling that for, you know, flooding, for example, talk to Parvise. Or, you know, setbacks would be, I would imagine, Liz Cullen on our planning. So, okay.
The only other thing, just when we do, if this does pass this evening, and I think it sounds like it's going to, if staff would just give us a couple of weeks' notice on what nights or what times we would be interviewing, that would be great as opposed to just setting dates, you know, in the past so that we would all be hopefully able to change our schedules around and make sure that it happens. Thank you.
Speaking of that, Bob, do you think we could do this? Generally, we do this before a council meeting, like at 6:00 or something like that.
We could certainly, depending on the schedule. I mean, it just depends on.
Yeah, generally, we notice for what, a couple of months with these?
Not that long, probably a few weeks.
Well, I would just like to encourage staff, I mean, April is a pretty busy month as it is, so perhaps this becomes a May-June type of startup.
Yeah, I think that's fine. And I guess the other comment I would make is since the council is talking about some very specific types of skills and people, it might take us a little while to find those folks, so that might help us.
Okay.
Well, Mark and I will talk about the scheduling of it, actually, then work on that.
Through the chair, what, do we need a motion?
Yes, we need a motion. We need a second, and we need to take a vote.
So the alternative one is authorize staff to advertise and schedule interviews for city council appointment of an ad hoc creek and watershed advisory committee to provide input to the city council on creek restoration and watershed issues?
Well, actually, that's not really what we talked about. I mean, I, my understanding is that it would be to provide input to the city council or to staff on the four items listed under update.
Okay.
That's more specific.
I'll change that motion to what you just said.
And would it, with the composition of the committee to be what we discussed?
Seven members, duration of 12 months, and then reports back periodically, as Mayor Grokot said. And then also having, the thing that worries me the most is that there's got to be some control of the dollars here, I mean, you know, of the staff time. I don't know if we make that in the motion or if it's just through the.
Staff came up with a 10,000, 10% of one full-time employee staffing the committee for six months. You know, 10% is that realistic or is it maybe less? I mean, if you look at maybe one or two hours a month?
With the $10,000, though, was anticipating a shorter timeframe for.
I understand that.
And in talking with Parvise, depending upon the degree of expertise required to respond to some of the committee's commentary, he's, I guess, asking me whether or not there would be funds available to bring in some drainage experts, maybe, that might be able to respond. And so, I mean, I really do think we're looking at a budget that's probably a bit more than this, which we can fine tune now that we have a better understanding as to what it is that the council is looking for.
Perhaps, to my fellow council members, perhaps we should just leave it to be that, you know, they basically have one or two meetings to figure out what they want to do to allow staff to come up with how much it realistically might cost and then come back to council for that piece of it. But it's like, I'm not to exceed $15,000 type of thing.
I think that's probably reasonable. If they get up and running before we get into budget, then it can be, you know, the council can have reins on that when we look at the budget and at that time.
We could try to run the two parallel. I mean, the budget process is happening as we speak. But if we advertise now and if they're able to have their first meeting before we look at the budget, or you look at the budget in May and June.
Right.
Then perhaps.
I think that could happen.
Either that or we just in the budget process, put in a placeholder of an amount that we're comfortable with, you know, 10, $15,000. And, you know, again, I look to, you know, we're looking for certain areas of expertise that the committee members are going to bring. So, you know, maybe that they either have pro bono, you know, connections or something that they might be able to bring some of that to bear to this committee.
Bob, can I suggest a friendly amendment?
Certainly.
To change the title of the committee a bit so that we reflect its alternative, the charge that we're giving them? Could we call it the Flooding, Land Use, and Creeks Advisory Committee?
Certainly.
Sorry, Flooding, Land Use?
Flooding, Land Use, and Creeks Advisory Committee. And with that, I'll second the motion.
Okay, we've had a motion.
Bob, did I see you nodding your head that you wanted to put a fixed dollar amount in?
No, I think your point is well-taken where there has to be a meeting, I think, or so. And then I don't know that we can put a fixed dollar amount today. I just want to make sure that, we have to make sure that we all pay attention to what's going on here, that's all. Because this can, we want to make sure it doesn't all of a sudden become a separate department.
Agreed.
And so I think after the first couple of meetings and after we pick the folks that are going to be on it, I think we're going to have a much better idea of what our costs are. At least that's what I think. I don't know if the rest of the council agrees with that, but I would rather not put a fixed amount on it right now.
Okay, so there's been a motion by Bob to advertise for a flooding, excuse me, land use and creeks advisory committee to be of seven members with the makeup as delineated earlier, to be of duration no more than 12 months, and to report back to council.
On the four items?
On the four items.
Under update and staff report.
And that was seconded by Vice Mayor Davids. Grokot.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Davids?
Yes.
Councilmember Tiggle Doherty?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes. Actually, before we close this, I just, I initially was not in favor of this, and I still want to, for this council to be conscientious of all the things, all the really big issues we have coming up in 2006, and being a little bit respectful of staff bandwidth so that they're paying attention and putting the focus on the really key issues. If watershed and creeks didn't happen this year, it can happen next year or the year after without too much impact. But if we're taking valuable staff time away from the PAF project or South County Fire, I just, I want, I would like staff to make sure that you're pretty forthright in letting us know and pushing back on us as a council to say, hey, we're out of bandwidth or we can only be running, you know, five different projects during this period of time because of the size and the complexity of these projects.
So I can't disagree at all with that. I think it's just a matter of, I think it's a matter of fitting this in. We have, other things will have to, unfortunately, or fortunately, or whatever, government has to keep moving in some way, and so this is one of those items, I think, that we can fit into the mix, hopefully. And hopefully staff will keep a surprise to that if it gets out of, like you said, the bandwidth.
Yeah.
Okay.
I appreciate those comments. And, I mean, I think that is part of what we're trying to do with the work program. And secondarily, I think it'll be a little bit easier for us to have that kind of dialogue once we go through the budget process and we're able to see the resources that we have and the, you know, the staffing opportunities that we have in order to address the issues that are before the council. So we'll be reporting back to you regularly on the status with the work program, and, you know, we appreciate having the opportunity to be frank with you with respect to what our abilities are.
Okay, thank you.
That brings us to item 8A, a resolution authorizing the city manager to amend non-exclusive cable TV franchise agreement and fiber network agreement with Comcast. Brian Moore, Assistant City Manager.
Mayor, members of council, you'll probably recall that late last year, you approved a new 15-year agreement with Comcast of California for cable TV services. And in that agreement, we had a new item called a fiber optic INET. And in that item, you probably recall that we had 13 sites around the city, namely all the city buildings, the fire buildings, and most of the schools. Because of the initial dollar amount of that agreement, we did not quite have enough money to get to all the schools, namely, we were not able to cover Heather School and White Oak School in the initial agreement. However, towards the end of those negotiations, we were able to negotiate a $50,000 undesignated PEG technical grant, which can only, is restricted money that can only be used for either the fiber network or for cable equipment. And after the agreement was signed, we did further negotiation with Comcast. We got an estimate for the two schools, and we learned fairly recently that we can accommodate those two schools and add them to the fiber network within the $50,000 budget. So we're coming before you tonight to specifically ask permission to have the city manager authorize an amendment to the franchise agreement, which would earmark some of that restricted money for the purposes of connecting the two schools. Now, this would be for video only. If the schools wanted to use this fiber network for other purposes such as phone service or data, they would on their own nickel have to add the additional equipment. But we think it's a great investment for the future, and it's something the schools may indeed want to avail themselves of in the future, particularly in light of the fact that in the franchise, we have reserved a government channel for the school district in the future to have their own TV channel, much as the city has this channel. So that's what we're up to, and I'd be happy to answer any questions on this item.
Thank you, Brian. Council, any questions?
Actually, I'd just like to say thanks to Brian for continuing to not only look out for the city hall and the city government types of facilities, but also looking to wire our schools where it's not a direct benefit. wire our schools, where it's not a direct benefit to the city, but certainly, the residents will get the, the kids of the residents will get the benefit.
Brian, I had just a few questions, and that is, I was looking at the attachment with the list of sites-
Mm-hmm.
And just looking at only the sites that are related to either San Carlos or our Fire Authority, and I don't see any, but I was wondering if, are there any sites on here that are city sites that are not included? I mean, city sites that have development, you know, so not a park or something like that that's undeveloped?
Not really, Mayor Grokot. We did have, in the last agreement, some sites that were designated originally for what they call cable drop or cable service. They were things like pump stations and other sites, where at one point, we had sort of envisioned using the cable network and cable modems to get to them. But wireless technology has dropped so much in price that we just did it that way, and that's the reason we kind of zeroed in on these sites.
And then, I noticed there's this designated fund that's about $50,000, the PEG grant.
Mm-hmm.
This uses only part of it.
Correct.
And it seems like we're, we've gotten to all the schools now, right, with this?
Mm-hmm.
So, could we consider also partnering, let's say, with the Chamber of Commerce, or, say, Hiller Aviation, or something like that, that where it might be of use, for instance, like Hiller, we're going to be using them for a site location, perhaps for the PAMP application?
Well, one of the things that we had, well, two answers to that, Mayor Grokot. First of all, to the extent that we do have this network, we believe that, and this would be completed by the end of 2007, according to the agreement, we would then be able to broadcast live. So, for example, to your question about hearings off-site, we could, if this network was up and running, we could, for example, do the field hearing live from the youth center. As far as Hiller, I think, given the distance, because this company's only wiring the residential areas, it would probably be cost prohibitive. But one thing that we are talking about is, we are, with the balance of the $50,000, and also with some of the other monies in this agreement, we are talking about improving the camera equipment in this room, in Room 207, the library, and we're also talking about buying some portable equipment, I believe, in the TV business, they call it a fly pack. And as I understand, the fly pack, the idea is it's sort of a TV studio in the box, where you can actually, you tape in different locations, you may not necessarily go live from them, but you could tape it and use it later. So, that's also going to be part of this money. So, we are planning to do additional equipment, but what we wanted to do first is to get a read on this before we, to see how much money we might have left, and then we'll work with the staff and with Comcast on what we might buy to make that happen.
Okay. Otherwise, those funds, because they're so restricted, they would just, what happens to them?
We would hold on to them, and they would be in an interest-bearing account, but you're right, under the agreement, Comcast has the right to audit us on their use, and so it's pretty much limited to either equipment related to the fiber network, or cameras, microphones, you know, that tape deck, videotape decks, that sort of thing.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's all my questions. Counsel, any discussion, or?
Nope, ready to make a motion?
Go ahead.
Okay. We need a, wait a minute, this is one of those yellow ones, huh?
It is.
Need a number.
Need a number. Make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 2006-
Twenty?
Twenty. The City Council of San Carlos, authorizing an amendment to non-exclusive cable TV franchise agreement and fiber network agreement with Comcast of California, Nine Incorporated, to add Heather School and White Oak School to the fiber network.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Davids?
Yes.
Councilmember Teakle Doherty?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes. First yellow.
First yellow. And that brings us to-
By the way, you only have to read the blues.
Okay, that brings us to, thank you, Bob. No, that's all right. I appreciate you reading it. Everyone can hear what it is. Item 8B is a report on the two-by-two committee.
Mayor, members of council, because of your revised schedule and moving the fields committee to the first meeting in April, we move forward this update on the status of the continuation of fire services with South County Fire Authority. What we wanted to do tonight is give you an update on what's been going on in this process, and also give you some of the source documents that have been handed out, the Fire Board. Obviously, Mayor Grokot and Councilmember Griselli have seen these, but for the rest of you, some of this may be new information. First item is the letter of agreement, and you probably know that we handed you a draft two on Wednesday, and then because, after the date of the agenda packet preparation, there was a meeting of the Fire Board, we, there were revisions to that document, so you now have what's called draft three. And I wanted to just run through some of the key items in that, and also to compare that to the motion that you passed, because the draft version of the letter of agreement at this point, that the Fire Board is working on, is somewhat different than the motion that Councilmember Davids had made. Some of the key points in the version that is now moving forward is the funding formula remains 53% San Carlos and 47% Belmont. However, it has been changed, so that the formula will change annually. And I think the key to that is that the balance between the two numbers is going to be a function of development in each community, and so, you know, over time, that number could change. Our share could get larger, it could get smaller. This is very different from the previous model, where, once it was set, it stayed in place 50/50 for many years. This would literally move every 12 months.
Do you want questions as we go, or you want to go ahead and complete first?
However you want to do it.
The basic question is on the 50%. Do we know how that's going to get calculated? What sort of weight, the number of stations versus number of calls?
It's the same formula as before, you know, and I think that's in the draft document we gave you. So, it's the same formula. The key, though, is, is that it changes every 12 months.
Right.
So, that's the part where it becomes much more unpredictable, volatile. I think that's the key thing.
Brian, may I ask a question as well?
Sure.
I know I'm on the board that does all this stuff, but just, you know, the 53%, 47%, even at this point, is a focused number, but it's not completely focused, correct? I mean, we're throwing in some data that we think is right, but it's going to be firmed up-
That's correct.
-as we look at that data more critically.
That's correct, although I think most of the variables in that are already firm. So, I think that it's highly likely that that, the first year, that will be the split.
Won't change much. And then, I had in my notes that we had actually decided upon, and Bob, you can jump in here, too, if you think I'm hearing things wrong here. I thought we had settled upon a three-year average, or a rolling average, as opposed to doing it. We would do it every year, but we would always use a rolling average, a three-year rolling average.
Well, the notes that I had, and again, I think one of the difficulties in, as we work in this process, is because there aren't motions and votes on many of these issues at the Fire Board, it's not always clear what the decision, quote-unquote, a recommendation is. And I heard, the day that was being described, some people talking about annually, and others talking about three-year average. And I did circulate this draft to the Belmont staff and our council at South County Fire, and Mr. Weiss, and everybody apparently heard it the same way I did, and so we left it as it's still in our mind, up in the air. But again, all of this is-
Okay.
Yeah, that's why it's that way, but, yeah.
Through the chair, I mean, to address Councilmember Davids' comment, I mean, the 25, 25, 50 is still the working formula, 25% based upon assessed value. And our current understanding is that that is approximately a 60/40 ratio, 60% San Carlos, 40% Belmont. Population is the second 25% portion of the formula, and I believe that that's closer to the 53/47 split. But that number, too, like the assessed value, will change from year to year, but they are talking about the three-year rolling average to give some stability to that. The third factor, the 50%, started off as being something that would be simply a 50/50 split, similar to what we currently have. But then, there have been factors that have been developed, that now are contained within that 50% that will allow it to fluctuate as well, including the expenses that each city incurs. Currently, both cities have two stations. If those expenses are identical, then you would have still something approaching a 50/50 split. There was some discussion about having other factors included within that, though, such as the number of calls. And I don't know that we have settled yet on whether or not the number of calls will be a factor or not, is it 50/50? But there are still some variables within that, that will cause that 53/47, as the mayor mentioned, to change from year to year. But right now, we think it's generally in that ballpark.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, again, if you look at item two on the first page of the draft letter, you'll see the various formulas. As far as the assessed valuation and population, those are the, each 25%, and then the last four factors you see are the final 50%. The next item is the name of the agency. You probably are aware that after this discussion happened at this venue on the 27th, on the following, even on the 28th, there was some discussion in Belmont, raised by both the Belmont Council and the firefighters, that apparently, some folks are not aware of what the South County Fire Authority is, and so there was a recommendation to change the name. So, the name is now being recommended, is being changed, to the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department. The next item has to do with fire budget, and there is a recommendation there that we both develop a two-year budget initially, and then also, we develop a 10-year projection. And as we get further into the report, you'll see that both of those have been drafted. There's also been a discussion about unfunded liabilities. You'll recall that there are four of those that are key, particularly the $13.5 million PERS retirement item, and the $1 million for retiring medical, I think it's about $400,000 to $900,000 in workers' comp, and some other items. The proposal of this council was to share those 50/50. The recommendation of the Fire Board is somewhat of a hybrid of that, basically to do 50/50 until the revenue measure passes, and then to flip it to the new formula. And that's also significant, because part of the intent, as I understand it, of the Fire Board is to include the PERS $13.5 million as part of, on the new formula, because it would be a budgeted item each year. In terms of restructuring, go ahead.
Quick question on that. The $13.5 million figure that keeps getting bandied about, and I know that it's $13 million, $14 million, somewhere around there-
Yes.
Are those from past liabilities, or projected, or past plus some projected future liabilities?
It's the current liability. However, that number changes every year, based on a three-year rolling average at PERS. And one of the things we're doing is, South County Fire has hired an actuarial that is a specialist in PERS costs, John Bartel, based in San Mateo. He is going to first verify the number, whether it's $13.5 million, whether it's more or less, and then, second, talk about how that could be apportioned. So, and that, and also, try to give us sort of a 10-year look going forward on what that number's going to be. Is it going to go up? Is it going to go down? But there was a lot of discussion, as you might imagine, and again, the mayor and Councilmember Griselli could probably amplify that point, about whether it made sense to share that 50/50, because that's, you know, that is the biggest component of this whole area, or whether to pay for it in the new formula over time. And I think the argument that the Councilmember Ward in Belmont made was that since PERS is paid for year by year, it's more of a budgeted item than it is a one-time item. So-
But again, my question is, was it liability that was incurred under the old funding formula of 50/50, or is it a portion of that is, you know, $7.5 million is past liability, and another $7 million is projected to be, going forward, the incremental liability as more-
I guess the best way to-
...occurrence occur.
The way I would describe it is certainly a large portion of it has to do with when we upgraded the benefits from two at 50 to three at 50. When we, after that went into effect, our liability went from around $7 million to $13.5. So, roughly, half of it, more or less, is clearly just the benefit enhancement. The balance has to do with employees who previously retired, employees who are currently with us, and, you know, they are sort of liabilities to date, if you want to look at it that way.
Through the chair, I mean, it is an existing liability, as of this time, that has been incurred under the 50/50 split. The proposal that has been put forward is that there be a method of repayment, should the South County or new authority dissolve within the next 10 years. And the proposal that has been put forward is that we would, moving forward, a couple of issues here, moving forward, that after the measure is passed, the split would be 53/47. And so, we would be paying off this liability on a 53/47 ratio, or whatever the ratio turns out to be from year to year. But generally, the accelerated burden would be on the City of San Carlos, at a 53/47 split, or some variation there up. So, we'd be paying off a higher share of the old liability, rather than 50/50, we'd be paying it off at a higher ratio. And so, we would be incurring and accepting a higher portion of that old liability. The proposal to address that issue that has been put forward is that if South County were to dissolve within some period of the first 10 years, that there would be an amortized schedule that would have the City of Belmont repay San Carlos for that liability that we had accepted with the new JPA, once the tax measure passes. For example, if we assume that the current additional 3% value that would be tied to the existing liabilities would be equivalent to about $400,000, and we think that's roughly the value that we would be accepting here with the new formula, that if the South County Fire Authority dissolved within the first year, Belmont might repay us that $400,000. If it dissolved in the second year, maybe they would repay us $350,000. Or it would be, there would be an amortized schedule, so that every year that the system stayed together, that the payment that Belmont would make to the City of San Carlos would be less, but some share of the liability that had been accepted by the City of San Carlos. Under the best-case scenario, though, if the South County Fire Authority stayed together for the entire 10 years, the City of San Carlos would have accepted and paid for a higher share of that existing liability than we currently are liable for.
And the basis for that is just based on Belmont saying that they want us to pay more? Or is it that our assessment district is actually going to be bringing in of a certain amount, 53% of that amount, and Belmont's going to be bringing in 47%, so it's basically letting each assessment district bring in additional revenue?
No, there's probably a combination of arguments. I mean, anything, those two, there is a sense, I think, that has been put forward, that since the Harbor Industrial Area was annexed, that-
But I think I remember hearing they agreed to stop talking about that.
They did, but it, they did.
So, that's, so, I mean, essentially, basically, the whole 53/47 is Belmont's negotiating position on this?
Correct.
So, if we came back and said, no, we think it's 50/50, because it was liability that was incurred during the time when the agency was at a 50/50 funding policy, is that, like, Belmont's going to walk? I mean, is that not a discussion?
Through the chair, you know, that's a tough, that was the toughest one for me to get over, okay? Because I, you know, I know where you're going here, and that's the way I looked at it originally. But because, as Brian said, this liability, it has to be broken down. Mr. Bartels is going to break it down for us, as he said. We don't know specifically what this liability is. We know it's out there, it's 13, 14, 15. How much is new, how much is old, whatever. But every year, it changes. And how to identify where the cut is, in other words, we have 30 employees. So, how much of that is, of those 30 employees is in there, and then next year, how much of those 30 employees? But, oh, two of those employees aren't here anymore. Oh, we have two new employees. It can become a little hornet's nest of trying to figure out who's on first, what's on second. You can't, as far as I know, identify specific dollars for all those specific items on a rolling average.
No, I understand. And I, I mean, I would go back to the point that Belmont, in fact, has probably had an additional employee with the paramedics than we have, and yet, it just seems to me that Belmont is driving these percentages that are all in the best interest of Belmont. And I think, as City Councilmember in San Carlos, I consistently go back to, well, let's look at what's the right funding formula for San Carlos-
Right.
And how to, you know, are we willing to bind future councils to a decision that we're making today about, you know, 47, 53%?
What we're trying to do, and again, as City Manager Weiss said, we're trying to put a little bit of a backup, as he mentioned, by identifying a certain percentage, 400,000, 500,000, whatever the number is, so that if this thing doesn't work in two years or three years, we aren't out what we've done. But over time, eventually, it sort of, it equals out to the percentage that you have. Now, that 53/47 could change to 52/48- Now, that 53/47 could change to 52/48, it could change to 55/45, it could change to 50/50 if Belmont, all of a sudden, for some reason, really had a high assessed valuation, and they certainly could. I mean, they have some availability to do that. It could turn the other way. So we are, certainly, there's no question that today, it looks like it's, that San Carlos is paying more. But we're also going to be getting a terrific amount of benefit by keeping South County Fire together. And one of the charges that I thought I had as a Fire Board member, and why I wanted to run for this office to begin with, is to try to keep it together in the fairest way that I could for the entire region. Now, I realize that San Carlos is here and Belmont is here, and for years, at least the last few years, apparently, there's been a little bit of difficulty of putting us both together. And be that as it may, that's the way it was. But I'm trying to figure out a way that we can regionalize this a bit more and say, we are South County Fire. We have to protect all the people in Belmont and San Carlos, as you mentioned, make sure there's paramedics everywhere, make sure we have truck and engine companies and the whole thing. It's a very delicate, difficult issue. Certainly, the council here will have every opportunity to approve or disapprove what Mayor Grocott and I do. And, you know, I certainly respect your thought. I was at the same point, but I, should I say, came over to a situation that I want to make this work as best we can. And there's, I think, some other issues in here that help San Carlos specifically. And when we get South County Fire together, San Carlos will have the best fire department that we can. So anyway, that was, that was my... Yeah, I guess I'd make two other observations as far as options. And again, we're presenting all of these, and I think, as Councilmember Griselli says, at some point, the full council will need to make a decision, either individually or collectively, on whether you accept the recommendation from your subcommittee or you want to modify it. One is, we talked about so-called pension obligation bonds, and if you want to get into that, we can. That's one opportunity to take the 13.5 and fund them at today's level and to share it 50/50. Or second, you could simply say that for purposes of this particular item, that even going forward, it's 50/50. So I think there are still some options on that one. But it is a, it's one of the big issues, clearly, as Councilmember Griselli says. The next item is restructuring.
Before you do that, I just wanted to throw a couple items in there. As Brian mentioned, we have discussed pension obligation bonds at the meetings. And one of the things we want to look at there is, we would only want to do that if it would save us money. And the way it would save us money is if, if we were through the bonds to be able to reduce our liability to PERS enough that it would reduce the PERS rate enough that our cash flow year in, year out, is reduced. It's like refinancing your house. And if through the refinancing, you're actually paying out less cash, then it's a good thing. If it's costing you more money, maybe it's not a good thing. Maybe it is, though, because on a cash flow basis, you have more cash available to do other things. So we have to still look at that. And it has been said by the Belmont folks that if we do the pension obligation bonds and it thus becomes something that you can actually, through accounting, if you will, set aside and earmark as a separate item, then we can look at the 50/50 on it. But it's difficult to do on a year in, year out basis for the reasons Bob pointed out. It is sort of an operational deal. And it's because of, in a sense, it's because when we agree to this new fire department, that we're keeping the employees that we currently have. And that's part of the reason we would have those obligations. It was also pointed out that, by Mr. Warden, that we could go this route and we could spend time and money every year authenticating what the numbers are. It would cost us about $35,000 in accounting fees to do so. And the number we're talking about each year is about $35,000. So do you want the agency to spend money accounting for something that's about the same value as what it is you're after? And that was discussed as well.
Yeah. Again, there are a number of options, and if you want to come back to this one, we certainly can. Restructuring. As you recall, there were different proposals in this one as well. The Belmont motion talked about making the restructuring effective July 1 of '06. The San Carlos motion talked about 30 days after the revenue measure passed. The recommendation from the Fire Board is the Belmont proposed, the effective July 1, 2006. JPA extension, there were two proposals here. The San Carlos proposal was, or excuse me, the Belmont proposal was no extension beyond June 30 of '06. The San Carlos proposal was extended January 1 of '07. The recommendation is the Belmont proposal, no extension beyond January 30 of '06.
Brian, if I can just comment on that, because I know, Tom, that was a key part of your motion. And so what we talked about was doing away with, you know, let the old JPA agreement actually die, but in the new JPA agreement, have clauses that deal with, like, the funding and so forth. So we're not just, you know, killing the old and moving on to the new and immediately going into a new funding formula and so forth. We have statements in the new JPA agreement to address the funding.
So the paperwork is behind us as of July 1, and we've got a new agreement, subject to things happening downstream, including the assessment district.
Presumably, there'd be a new JPA, although, again, that would be subject to the approval of Fire Board and both city councils, because under the existing JPA, both city councils have to approve.
And just one more comment on that, Brian. One of the reasons we would like to be able to do that is because we want to be able to put everything in a nice, clean package, put a bow on it, and when we go out for the assessment or whatever it is, whether it's an assessment or a parcel tax or whatever, to be able to present to the voters, here's what we have. Here's our new South County, or our new fire department named Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department. Thank you, Brian.
Contingency plan. The Belmont motion talked about the need for a contingency plan. And the contingency plan that the Fire Board is going to recommend is that if the revenue measure that is proposed fails, that either agency could withdraw by June 30 of 2007. However, if it succeeded, the current practice of an 18-month notice would continue.
Frank, could you talk a little bit about what happens if the measure fails? What the contingencies are for finding alternatives? I mean, during some period of time, then, the new restructured version would be in place that would allow then either city to be looking at alternatives for, for example, a San Carlos Redwood City Fire Department or a Belmont-San Mateo Fire Department or...
Yeah, I think the Fire Board talked about a couple of different variations. One, obviously, even if the measure fails, you could keep South County together. Another scenario might be, the Belmont folks talked about, if the measure failed, they might start their own fire department. And presumably, San Carlos could do that, or we could go back to the two contract offers we had on the table or other options. So I think there are a lot of things that could happen if the measure failed.
But the contingency plan that would be contained within the new JPA document would be that essentially, both cities agree to stay together through June 2007.
Correct. And that date, by the way, assumes an election for the revenue measure this year. If for some reason we don't do that, I think we'd probably have to revisit that date, because there was considerable discussion at the Fire Board about the fact that, given how long it's taken us just to get to this point, that in addition to a noticing period, you obviously need some sort of workout time for both agencies. And I think that's correct.
Just some feedback to our committee members. I would suggest that you look closely at that date, because as we've seen with how long it's taken, a year is not very much time. And in fact, it's less than a year. So I would strongly encourage you to try to push that date to June 30 of 2008, just in case.
Point's well taken. Hello. Your point, excuse me, your point's well taken. I think part of the tenor of the board, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that we have gone through a lot of items here in the last few months, and we wouldn't necessarily have to start from scratch. And that's why we had a shorter period instead of a longer period.
Yeah, but operationally, if indeed the measure does not pass, which I'm hoping that it does pass, obviously, that would be, we'd know that in August, September?
Well, I'm getting to that. There's some challenges there, too.
So, you know, it may be November before we actually even know. It may be even later. And then that June deadline is only six months away. So yes, even just operationally renegotiating, coming up with contracts and everything else with potentially another partner, I think that June 30, 2007 is probably unrealistic.
We're optimistic we're going to be able to pass this. But your points, your points well taken.
Well, it's a contingency plan.
Your points, your points well taken. Again, when you're...
I'd rather see us being a little bit more conservative.
When you're, that's the whole point of why we're bringing this back to the councils. And I'm sure Belmont will have comments tomorrow night, too. And all of them are going to be taken into, you know, into, into thought process and just a matter of working out the details. And that, the devil is in the details. So I appreciate, you know, that comment.
Well, and the other thing I would say on that is I think we owe it to our firefighters to at least give them some peace of mind that for the next year and a half to two years, that, you know, they, they do have, you know, things are going to stay pretty much the same. So, you know, I guess that's enough said on that topic.
The one thing we did talk about on the date was to keep it to something that makes sense in terms of either a fiscal year or an annual year or halfway through a fiscal year, so that we're not just, you know, arbitrarily some date in September or November or whatever.
Oh, yeah, no, that's why I said, changed it from 2007 to 2008, just to push it back a year.
Okay. Next item is the operational audit. You'll probably recall that Councilmember Dickinson in Belmont was interested in operational audit before the election. And on this one, the recommendation is that the staff develop a scope of work defining what the audit would cover. And then this would also allow us to put the audit out to a competitive RFP process. Next area is financial impacts, and we wanted to talk to you a little bit about some of the financial impacts of what's being recommended. First of all, the proposal is that prior to the revenue measure going to the voters, we would have what's being called a GAAP budget, which would be sort of a business-as-usual budget. I think this is going to be a little bit challenging, because as you know, in San Carlos, we have our $2 million general fund budget deficit. And so, given the parameters that the city manager has set out, we are planning to fund South County at somewhere between 4.17 and 4.92 million in the coming year. However, if you put into effect the new formula, and this is where I think the effective data that new JPA is going to be critical, our share would actually be 5.15 million, which would be $230,000 over even the highest budget target. So that, I think, is going to be a challenge for the council when you get to your budget deliberations in June. The final amount, as far as what we can allocate to fire, as I note, is obviously dependent upon the city manager's budget hearings that he's starting to hold this week and next. And it's also going to be a function of what other revenues we can find in the general fund and impacts on the key departments, because obviously, if we have to find $230,000 above what our initial maximum budget allocation for fire is, that's going to be challenging.
Frank, just really, a quick question. What is the process for the new JPA? Should we come back and say, you know what, we can't fund 5.15 million, we can only fund 400, you know, 4,500? Is there a process by which, you know, we go back and basically, I guess the process in the past has been Belmont and us doing that, saying, here's how much we can afford, and then making the cuts and trying to figure out how to, how to change the South County Fire budget accordingly? Do we still have that latitude and that flexibility?
I think that that's something we haven't yet gotten to in these discussions, but I think that your point, Councilmember Teagueal Doherty, is a good one. What we've done historically over the years on South County is we typically use the lower number of either Belmont or San Carlos, based on how much each agency can afford. I think at the upcoming year, what we've been told by the two cities is that San Carlos will have 4.9 million to spend on fire, and Belmont will have 5.8 million to spend on fire. So clearly, the San Carlos number is going to be the one that's going to govern, you know, how much money we can spend for South County.
You should just let them pay the 53 percent for 2006, 2007, since they've got more money than us.
Okay. Then you also have in your packet the first cut at a 10-year budget projection. This was prepared by South County Fire's Chief Loudon and also by Mr. Phil, who's the controller. It assumes that the assessment amount that's assessed in both communities will be increased by a percent a year. It also assumes that each city will be able to afford a 6 percent annual increase in their general fund or their fire authority contribution. And it finally assumes that the San Carlos share of the assessment will be $1.9 million.
Frank, if I may interrupt. I also noticed that, I think it assumes, based on the title, four engines and a truck. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Which is more than we have now.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And as I noted, it also assumes the new formula at 53/47. However, it assumes that formula doesn't move. And as Councilmember Griselli just explained to you earlier, the formula could in fact move. So, you know, really projecting these costs accurately over the life of the 10-year assessment, I think, is going to be tricky. But just to give you the numbers out of that spreadsheet, you have it in front of you. This spreadsheet says that if the revenue measure passes, San Carlos's costs would go to 7.07 million in the first year and 10.06 million by the end of the measure. And I, and I think staff's observation is, we don't believe that, certainly in the early years, that San Carlos is going to be able to afford a 6 percent a year annual increase. And so we think that we're going to need to tweak that budget and probably reduce it a bit for it to be affordable, even if the rest assessment passes.
If I, I'd like to jump in here on that. I just want the council to know, we, we've been doing a lot at these meetings. One of the things we haven't done, though, is taking a look at this budget. We were given a number of different spreadsheets, this 10-year budget being the last one. We also had received before that a budget to try and come up with the...
The GAAP budget.
Well, no, I'm looking at the spreadsheet that was done by Thomas Phil to show us how we would, why we would need the 3 million.
Oh, the 13 million, yes.
Yeah, and so the 13 million. And we didn't really get into that except to use it as a tool when we were talking about the assessment. And as you heard me ask, Brian, if this assumes four engines and a truck, we also haven't looked at service levels or made any decisions about service levels. So there's a lot of work still on the budget. So these numbers that are being out there are pretty soft right now, because we haven't focused on them. The other item is to just note that this 7.07 looks like a huge jump. But for the public to know, what we're doing there is we're putting together reserve funds, which we don't have right now. And for instance, if we had a truck or an engine go through an intersection and a car didn't pay attention to the fact that he had his siren on and was going to a fire and wiped out that engine, we have no money whatsoever to replace that engine or that truck. We have no reserve funding at all. And some of the other liability issues, the unfunded liabilities issues that we've talked about, there's a lot of things that we're not putting in our current budget, because we simply don't have the revenue to do it. And that's the idea of the assessment, is to take care of some of these things. So we're not just jumping from, you know, about 5 million to 7 million without any justification. There's, there's a lot of backup material to that that is not going out to the public right now, but it's, it's not going out, because we haven't focused on it, we haven't made decisions about it.
Well, and I'd also add, too, that this is strictly the South County Fire Authority's request. It hasn't been vetted. And certainly, one of the things that's changing is that in the current JPA, of course, the two city managers would review the budget before it goes to the Fire Board. Under the new proposal, some of these things might go straight to the Fire Board. So we have to clarify who's doing the budget in the future. But I do think that Mayor Grocott's point is well taken. Because in this particular draft of the budget, San Carlos could not afford it even with the assessment passing, clearly, we're going to have to make some cuts here, both in terms of the base GAAP budget and also the 10-year projection. So I would agree, you're right. This, this needs to be trimmed.
Through the chair, I would actually, I mean, like to maybe suggest that we let Brian now go through the rest of this and not ask questions, because at this rate, I mean, we're only on slide three out of quite a few. We've got a lot of ground to cover. And again, I need to beg out of here at 10:30. So, and I would like to be able to participate in some discussion, rather than we go through and have a lot of dialogue on each one of these points and the history and everything all the way through, if that's acceptable. Tom, you?
I'm okay. Carry on.
Okay, fair enough. Let's move on to unfunded liabilities. And again, this is very similar to what you've seen before. Again, the main change here, as City Manager Weiss described to you, is the difference of the allocation, rather than the 50/50 share for all of these as originally proposed in Councilmember David's motion. This now talks about 50/50 until after the revenue measure passes, and then the new formula takes effect. The main items are still the same as before, the PERS retirement, the workers' comp, the retiree medical, the outstanding truck lease and other costs. The Belmont Finance and HR directors are still crunching on these numbers. We estimate probably April or May, you'll have a better handle on the final total in each of these four categories. Now, let's turn to the fire services assessment. There's been a lot of talk about that proposal, and we have a number of updates for you tonight about that. First of all, at the last meeting, we told you that it would take roughly four to eight weeks to get the, both the assessment amounts and also the amount of revenue raised to see how close we came to the 1.9 million we originally projected. The city managers actually administratively approved this work starting a couple of weeks ago, so that work is now underway, so the four-to-eight week clock has started. The Fire Board also authorized the work this past Wednesday, and we're awaiting the final tweaks to the original proposal for legal review. Our special counsel, Joan Casman, who's in the audience tonight, had asked for a couple changes to the original proposal. changes to the original proposal, and we've conveyed that request to the Belmont staff, and we're waiting for that wording. As I note, we think that the actual assessment levels and revenue levels, we should have for you in either late April or sometime in May. And we think that once you have that, that will give you, both the Fire Board and ultimately each council, the information you'll need to decide whether you want to have an assessment or a parcel tax. Staff thinks that until you see what those levels are in each of those two scenarios, it would be hard for you to come to a final decision.
And Brian, just, I'm not asking a question, Inga, but just adding to his report here, another thing we talked about at the Fire Board but decided we'd wait until we get the report from the assessment engineer is the possibility that we could do a parcel tax in the residential areas and an assessment only in the commercial areas of the two cities, and we could do it that way as well.
That was a proposal the mayor made at the Wednesday meeting, yes. As far as the format, and again, you may want to hear more from your special counsel tonight on this question. Both city special councils have met along with the South County Fire Authority Legal Counsel, and they continue to note that there is no case law on the zone approach that we talked about last time. And they continue to believe that the best approach for the two cities may in fact be to hold separate elections rather than a district-wide election. Turning to the area of available data, we have been working with our IT staff and with the county. We have produced the data by business and parcel type, you know, how many hotels, how many warehouses, that sort of thing, which is how these assessments are normally done. However, we were a little surprised to learn that we do not have the commercial building square footage in San Carlos. We initially went to Metro Scan, which is a commercial vendor that takes data from the county and repurposes it. They had that data field. However, when we pulled the CD, we found that only 1% of the fields were populated. Then the county told us they have the data, and so we have requested it. We haven't received it yet, but we're looking forward to getting it. We also talked to Belmont on how they calculated their data, and apparently, they used roof lines and made approximations based on how many stories a building was and that sort of thing. We think that might give you an approximation of square footage, but given that we're taxing people based on this data, staff is still kind of wrestling with whether that is a good approach to utilize or not. In terms of timing, obviously, and this gets to Councilmember Teagle Doherty, or one of your questions or comments, either way we go with one of these elections, we would need to have the results of the tax or assessment to the county by either the end of July or early August for it to go on the tax rolls for the coming year. One of the questions that came up last time, and we literally, as you probably know from the message I sent you earlier today, we were asking what would happen if we did a supplemental taxation. Normally, the county has a handling fee of $1.50 a parcel to do a late assessment. We were told that the late assessment might be on the order of $20 a parcel. We now heard from Mr. Phil in Belmont late today that the charge is actually $60 a parcel. So, staff believes at this point that that's probably not viable if we don't make the early August date. I don't think you really want to be taxing people $84 and then sending 60 of it to the county. So, that's kind of where we are. There was also a discussion about hand billing, sending out a bill but not tying it to the property tax. That is an option if we are late in our election. However, we're told by the assessment firm that that normally results in only a 60% collection rate because, since it's not tied to your property tax, it's harder to collect, and you might have to have a collection agency. So, staff believes that if we do miss the window on the election this year, we think the most likely scenario is probably to do the revenue measure next year, so we have plenty of time for the collections, and we don't have to pay the $60 a parcel charge. Operational issues, we talked about this last time, and this is basically the same list that you've seen before. These are the 11 operational issues that the two city councils still need to discuss. I'll leave it to this council as to whether that's something you want to discuss tonight or at a future meeting. But we have provided this list now to the Fire Board, and we're anticipating that at one of their upcoming meetings, they will go through these in detail and decide if they still are in favor of these or they want to tweak them. Then we come to the matter of the hazardous materials unit. That's been discussed, I think, a few meetings back in this body. As you know, South County Fire provides countywide hazmat response for San Mateo County. The unit is actually housed in the downtown San Carlos station. The direct costs are reimbursed on a 50/50 formula between the county and the cities of this county. And the question that's been raised in the last couple of years is whether the so-called administrative costs at South County Fire, namely Battalion Chief Belleville primarily, should be covered. I believe, South County Fire staff believes that the new agreement as amended requires that. I think the cities and the county do not believe that that's required. We have discussed this at the staff level, or "we," meaning the South County Fire staff, with the county and with Belmont. More recently, there was a meeting with the City Managers Association earlier this month in March to discuss it. And basically, where we are now is that through the vehicle of the Emergency Services Council and their budget process, we have been told by the other cities and by the county that if we give them documentation in the next couple of days to put these costs in their budget, that they would be willing to reimburse us for these administrative costs starting July 1st. They would not be willing to go back, but they would be willing to do it starting July 1st. We also became aware at the City Managers' meeting, and frankly, something I had not heard, is apparently the county also has administrative costs that have not been reimbursed. There's a gentleman named Bill Lent, who is with County Environmental Health, and those costs have not been reimbursed, and the county feels that if South County should get their administrative costs, so too should the county. I think staff feels that's hard to argue against, so we would certainly support that. And finally, the cities in particular, I know a lot of the discussion at our meetings have been about the county 50% share, but I think we have to recognize on this issue that the other half is, of course, paid by our fellow cities. They are very concerned about the fact that this, what they view as a critical and important service, and I think all of you have made that comment as well, has such a short fuse of 30-day notice. And so, part of their proposal is that if South County Fire were to receive its administrative costs starting July 1st, they would hope that we would be willing to amend this agreement to provide a six-month notice for termination rather than 30 days, to give them more time to provide alternative service. And I think certainly at the staff level, we don't have a problem with that. So, to wrap up, the items that we think you could discuss tonight and provide direction to your subcommittee on are the draft letter of agreement, the financial impacts on the funding levels, the unfunded liabilities and how they might be handled, the proposed fire service assessment, the operational issues, and the hazmat question, and of course, any other matters that are mentioned in the two reports that I did not cover. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or turn over to the council for discussion.
Brian, can I just ask a couple of questions related to the assessment?
Sure.
With the assessment that you talked about, we don't have the commercial square footage, how are we possibly going to do an assessment if we don't have that data? Or do you really think that that data exists someplace where we can get our hands on it?
Well, I think there's two different scenarios. First is that we did look at the assessments that were done in Millbrae and Pacifica, and in neither case did they use square footage approach. They used a business-type approach. So, if in fact we used a business-type approach, we actually would be doing it the way it's normally been done. Second, as far as the square footage data, we still are pursuing the data. We are aware that the council was interested in using that approach for the parcel tax and also for this. So, we're going to see what we can dig up. I think it is possible that if we can't dig it up, I mean, we could hire someone to go out and, you know, look at the buildings or go through the records. I think Belmont said that it took them three weeks in the county assessor's office to go through, I think it was 350 parcels, and estimate based on roof lines data. So, we could do something like that, but given the short timeframe, if we're going to hit this year's election, I'm not sure how realistic that is. My current guess is that if that county data that we, again, we've ordered it, we haven't seen it yet, if it is not accurate or if it's not all there, I think if we want to hit the current timeline, we may be forced to use the per parcel approach.
And under the assumption that we'll be doing or considering separate assessments by agency, San Carlos could indeed do it based on a typical approach while Belmont may choose to assess based on a square footage?
That's true. That is true, yes.
Okay. And then, my second question has to do with timing and options. So, I didn't hear clearly from you, you says need to have results of the county by end of July or August, the results of...
The election and the amount of the tax or assessment per parcel. Because what they would do, we would give them like a spreadsheet, and then they would transfer that onto their records and onto the tax.
So, then the election would be when?
The election would be in the sheet that I guess is coming right around.
Oh, okay. So, I'm not seeing it on here. Ballots will be mailed out on the 19th. So, this basically gives us about six weeks to actually put together a campaign, inform the voters...
Yes.
And hope that they trust in their council to tell them that they should really be voting for this.
Yes, and I think Councilmember Grisilli and Mayor Grokot could probably comment some more, that has been the topic of considerable discussion at the Fire Board.
The difficulty is it's truly not six weeks because we don't have the number yet.
Okay, so, let's, okay, shortness of time aside, my following question, which is actually, I mean, what does this do to the JPA? So, there's no way that we feel confident that we could actually meet the timeline of sending, mailing out the ballots on the 19th, which then pushes it back a year, which, I mean, based on the $60 parcel charge, which I don't think we even want to go there. What does that do to the JPA or the proposed JPA?
We haven't decided yet. If we don't go out in May, in other words, if we miss the deadline, we haven't finally decided what's going to happen then. When would the new JPA kick in? When would the new percentages kick in? As Matt, if I'm saying this right, we haven't come to a final agreement on that yet because we haven't given up on the 19th yet, although I tried to press that issue a bit, but it came back to me, and so, we still need the numbers. Until we get the numbers, we're just not going anywhere. But Mayor Grokot might have more comment on that.
We, at the time, we didn't know anything about these figures of $60 per parcel, so forth. So, we were still talking about, we feel like we at least need four weeks to do a campaign, and we won't have the ability to do that until uni gives us the information, and that's on the 28th of April, which would mean that we would need the whole month of May to do, at least the whole month of the May, to do a campaign. So, the earliest we could do the mailing of the ballots really would be sometime in June.
So, when would the, if the ballots were mailed in May 19th, when would the ballots due back?
I believe there's a 45-day period, if I remember this correctly.
So, that's the, like, July 12th, the assessment district public hearing?
Yes.
They basically extend, that schedule is very conservative. In other words, as Brian said, it's 45 days. So, if you started June 1st, it would be, it would be basically July 15th. The reason they put, if you notice there, it was May 19th to July 12th, which is way more than 45 days, but because they were looking to make sure that they have, I guess they had to do some administrative, whatever, things that they have to do, and then that would be the day that you'd have a meeting to do it. The difficulty is, we just don't control this process until we get those numbers. And it's just, we're pushing right up against, we can solve every one of these issues, and we have agreed, you know, the Fire Board has agreed on an awful lot of them, but the difficulty is, we're just running out of time. And I don't know, it's a difficult...
Yeah, and that's actually one of the reasons, in one of the earlier slides, you probably heard me comment that as far as the contingency plan, that you might want to say June 30th of '07 if the election's held this year. Because obviously, if it's held next year, then that changes all your dates. I think another key thing to realize, too, is in addition to waiting for the assessment engineer, we're still waiting for the final PERS number and the final retiree medical number. So, there's still several numbers that are kind of critical, in my way of thinking, to knowing what the total cost to the taxpayers is that we don't have yet. So, I think it's, you know, we could, you know, as Councilmember Grisilli says, if the stars and the moon all line up correctly, we could make it, but it's going to be tight.
Okay, and then, another couple of questions, actually, have to do with the operational and structural concepts for consideration. I'd be interested, maybe, Bob, you can speak to this, on the South County Fire Board remaining at four members. Is that a hard and fixed, because it seems to me that four members hasn't worked in the past and has gotten us to where we are today. So, is there any willingness or openness to look at some other organizational...
The difficulty that I see, that we talked about it, is where does that fifth member come from? Do we get him from Cupertino? I don't know. I mean, that's the difficulty.
A tiebreaker.
Yeah, I know, but it's, you know, we try to, I think what we've done here in making it four members, but we try to make our, what we call, what, a weak JPA, so that instead of the city managers, it comes back to the council. So, now we have odd numbers, and other people who can vote on what we need to do. I think that's what basically we were talking about.
I don't understand, because I mean, I would assume that, for example, if you had an issue where, say, we wanted to add a paramedic or do something...
We, I'm sorry, apologize.
We, San Carlos...
Okay.
Would like to have additional services...
Two members on the San Carlos over there, okay.
Correct, and they would have the support of their full council. So, you've got your five votes...
Right.
But at the end of the day, it's two and two, or five and five is 10.
But you have 10 people thinking about it now instead of four. In other words, I mean, it's still not an even number, but you have another group of, in other words, now the way it is, it stops right there. It doesn't go any farther.
Actually, to go with your example, if we wanted to add a paramedic, it would probably be pretty easily accepted because it would fall into the funding formula under the 50/50. We would pay for that paramedic. It wouldn't really impact the whole deck of cards. If we wanted to add a whole fire station, that portion of the formula that's 50% would change. So, we'd have to have, we'd have to have the budget...
That controls really only 50% of that 50%.
Excuse me?
It's only 50% of the, anyway, okay, I hear your point.
It's 50% of the 50% now.
It's just real hard to get off that.
And that's, that's okay.
I'm wide open, believe me. Give me the answer, and I will run with it as fast as I can.
I was just going to say through the Chair that earlier in the discussion, when we met with the firefighters' union, they actually threw out some ideas. One was to have a public member selected by the other four, and the other proposal they had was a member from the harbor industrial area. So, I mean, there are scenarios, I suppose, you could consider. The other comment I'd make about the weak JPA, and again, I think there are pros and cons to all of these things, is that while that gives more authority to the full councils in each city, it also may make decisions harder because now you've got to get through, you know, three votes instead of one, so...
Yeah, agreed. Then my second question actually has to do with the point number five, the fire chief reporting to the Fire Board versus the city managers. Is there, was there a reason behind that as well?
Yes, because of, we want the fire chief to, for instance, it's not that he won't report to the city managers, but he would, like, in the case, the way we see this happening, and we haven't discussed these items yet, this is next on our agenda this Wednesday to start digging into this material, I believe. But one of the ideas here is that the fire chief would work with the Fire Board, give recommendations to the Fire Board. The Fire Board would then vote on that and then send those recommendations to the council. And at that point, that's the point that the city manager has, to add input and advise his or her council on what he sees in that recommendation and where he might be in parallel and say, yes, I recommend that, I am in agreement, or here I have a little bit of a problem because of this or that. And that's where you would get the input and the take from the city manager. But to allow the fire chief to deal directly with his staff, whatever his or her staff would be, and his Fire Board.
The only issue I see with that is that it's up to the city managers to make budgetary recommendations. And so, I would like to see the fire chief and each city manager working pretty closely because the big issue is really, I mean, there's operational issues in which case the fire chief would, you know, obviously need to work very closely with the city manager and city staff. But on the budgetary piece, you know, if the fire chief came to, you know, the four-plus-four or the four-member committee and said, I want an additional couple of million dollars this year, and here's how you, here's what you're going to get for it, I think that it's almost that it ought to be done in conjunction with the city manager so that the city manager has some involvement, the city managers have involvement and some ability to work with the fire chiefs before it gets brought to the Fire Board. Because I don't think any of us are experts at this, and, you know, we hire professionals to do this, so...
Yeah, I guess there's two questions really in this area. One is who hires, fires, and evaluates the fire chief? Today, it is the management committee, which are the two city managers. The other is, I think you're right, Councilmember Teagle Doherty, the budget and also things like the labor agreements, grievances, whatever. If it is the case that the fire chief literally reports to the Fire Board, and you could do that, then all of that stuff goes directly to the Fire Board. So, I think the Fire Board then gets a lot more operational issues, which, you know, again, you have more control, but you're going to spend a lot more time running the fire department. And the question is, is that where you want to go?
One of the, well, there's two issues that we were trying to do... One of the, well, there's, there's two issues that we're, we were trying to do with this. One is, actually, to bring in the city council, because right now, so much was, over the last 27 years, so much was happening with the Fire Board, and the council could really be pretty non-involved, and not even pay that much attention to it, because they just sent their two Fire Board members and let them deal with it, and never dug into the material and looked at it. This will force the councils, because the material will come back to them, to always take a look at it. The other issue is that the way things have been operating is so much in the opposite direction, which is, the two cities have said, here's what we're willing to give you, go make a fire department, you know? Here's 10 bucks, go make a fire department. And what we're trying to do is get it turned around a little bit the other way, where the fire chief can say, here's the fire service that, you know, I'm recommending, and here's how much it will cost, and now if you want to reduce that fire service, you're more than welcome to do so, you just need to understand that that's what you're doing in order to get to some number that you want. So, we're just trying to change the perspective a little bit.
Well, I guess, that's based on, one of the things you said, Matt, was that now the councils will have to dig into this, and I guess my, my question to my fellow council members is, do we really think that that's what we want to do? Do we really want to start digging into the day-to-day operational things of fire? And I would assume, probably, the answer to that would be no, much like, I don't want to be digging into the day-to-day operational issues of City Hall, I don't want to be digging into the day-to-day issues of our police department, I mean, where does kind of this end? And so, I think it's, I do like the ability to have the final decision-making and the discussion around the budget pieces, but in terms of how they spend that money, you know, I would, I would suggest that we, as councilmembers, don't know how to adequately assess or hire or fire a fire chief, and that that may be better left to the city managers, who actually have some of that experience, or certainly have colleagues that they can draw on that experience to be able to adequately assess that.
Well, there's no question that this, this system would, would give the Fire Board a lot more power, and really, that's what you're, we're going to be voting on, whether we want the fire, the two people there on the Fire Board to have a lot more power and a lot more hands-on. Now, I was not on before, obviously, the last couple of months, and I guess they would meet monthly, or whenever they would meet quarterly, I'm not sure, whenever they needed to meet.
Right, right, they, they met monthly until the termination of the-
Right, and this, this is going to require a lot more time, I think, on the, there's no question that we're loading, loading the Fire Board members, whoever they are, with a lot more responsibility. How much do we want to give them, and how much do we want to have it come back to us versus using the city? I mean, if I had a question about hiring or firing, I certainly would go to the city manager. We're not trying to eliminate the city manager from the, from the loop, it's just, it's a whole, it's, as Matt said, it's just a whole different, it's, whether, if it was top to bottom before, we're turning it upside down. That could be right, that could be wrong, that's just the way that, so far, it's proceeding. So, again, these are all items that, that's why we're bringing it all back, because we got to kick it around, to see how the councils, Belmont may have the same point that you just bring up, they meet tomorrow night, and again, they're going to be, we're all going to be doing on this.
So, just for, again, clarification, I mean, where did this, where did this come from? This, is it a recommendation? Is it a, is it number five? Is it, is it a proposed change by the Fire Board?
That was actually something that came out of the two-by-two meetings in January, and, and what happened was, there was a series of proposals that were made by Councilmember Warden and Mayor Grokot that were quickly agreed to. I would characterize it as pretty much everything but the financial stuff, and this was part of that set of things that was quickly agreed to.
Between Matt and Dave?
No.
Well, between all four, it was two-by-two.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, no, the Fire Board voted on it. These were, these were, again, it's, it's changing, it's turning it around, where the city managers have a lot, as I understand it, the city managers have, they're in between here, and we're basically sort of moving them to the side and making it a Fire Board-to-the-city Council thing, and we're, we're bypassing the city managers.
That's right.
If I'm saying it right.
That's, that's the way I understand it, that the Fire Board is going to vet the budget now, that they're going to hire and fire?
Right, it's a weak, it's a weak JPA.
Well, and I would, I wouldn't characterize it as bypassing the city manager, I would say, it's, it's more, at what point in time does the, do the city managers get involved? Yeah.
I think, though, it's more typical of the JPA structure, the SBSA is the same, in a sense, but the commissioners, who are elected officials appointed by their councils, hire the general manager. They don't go to a technical committee of public works directors for the city served, they go directly to the, to the commissioners. I think it, you know, since we're shaking this up and mixing it around, it seems to me to be an inappropriate organizational change, and, and really puts the chief in touch with the political body that makes the decisions, and I think, I think we benefit from it.
Okay.
It just seems to me, I mean, I know, as, the SBW, whatever it is, is a lot, lot larger agency, covering a lot more cities, and there probably isn't the opportu, I'm just, again-
Well, I think-
... well, in the past, but just trying to get, how do we, how do we make sure that what happened in the past doesn't happen in the future? And by leaving it at two and two, I think we're painting ourselves into a corner a little bit. Changing it upside down, I think, probably could work if there was a, you know, a fifth member. Now, you know, I'd almost think maybe it's somebody from the county with hazmat, and sort of bringing it, you know, breaking up that, that logger jam, if you will, where it's just two and two, and you, you automatically end up with, you know, two sides of the table kind of thing, whereas if you have a third, maybe the dynamics would be slightly different.
I agree 1,000%, but who's that fifth person? That's the difficulty that you have, to try to figure it out, and we're trying to work within the, you know, the parameters that we have, I, you know.
Well, I mean, if we keep looking back, I mean, because hazmat is obviously a really important piece of this program, and is valued countywide, you know, it's, I would almost recommend that we look to see if maybe someone from Office of Emergency Services or one of the county supervisors, or somebody that would be able to represent the county piece and the other cities, might, might be a, an appropriate person to have on that, just to, to structure the JPA that way.
The only caution I would-
I'm sorry.
The only caution I would have on that, Inga, is when you look at hazmat as a percentage of the budget, it's pretty small, and then you're allowing them to make decisions about everything regarding South County Fire, or whatever we call this in the end.
Well, I, I don't know-
And I don't know that we want to do that.
That I, I, it's really more, because if, if you bring on somebody that understands the issues and understands the constraints because of the budgetary constraints or personal constraints, or whatever it is, that person isn't going to be by themselves controlling anything. You still need to get a majority, and so, you know, they're going to get, you know, perhaps lobbied hard, but at least they're going to get lobbied, and at the end of the day, you know, they may, they may be able to bring a different perspective and bring some, some balance to that, rather than, you know, essentially, the compromise position, which I've seen in the past, which is, I think, instead of being the win-win, the compromise is the lose-lose, and that's really what's sunk South County Fire to date, is that this compromises the lose-lose.
Well, I, I think, I think to bring, I mean, I'm not trying to bring it to an end, because your point, I mean, we could talk about this, I mean, certainly, I'd listen to anybody about a proposal, but I think the whole point of this is to make Belmont and San Carlos control their own destiny by themselves, and I know four's not a great number, but at least we've got it to ourselves, and we are now in wait, making the weaker JPA agreement, or arrangement, bring it back to us, and that's something that I don't think had, was happening before. It was two and two, and it didn't go any past, any farther than that. It was stuck, as far as I understood it. Now, again, but again, that's, it's all, it's where, all in where you're standing.
Absolutely.
So, anyway.
The only place I know, actually, that two and two became an issue, was right at the end, when Belmont was talking about, after the failure of Measure I, going out immediately for an assessment, and-
No. Brian said through many meetings, you know, I knew it was going to be the same thing.
That's the only thing I'd ever heard of, is-
Yeah, there have been, over the years, a number of items.
Yeah.
We're going to try, I mean, we're trying to get a new, a new system, and again, whether it works with four, or works with 10 or 20, I don't know, but we're going to, we're trying to, trying to set it up differently. Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions or direction to the-
A question on unfunded liabilities, I'm really trying to understand the process, and maybe little knowledge is a dangerous thing. However, with the PERS situation, we know on, on the employee's side, we know the age, and we know the 3% at 50, and we know-
Right.
-the retirement term, potentially, and we know the age factor, the mortality factor, we can compute something.
Mm-hmm.
But as I understand the PERS account, at any point in time, there would be a deficit.
Or a surplus.
Or a surplus, but let's say there's a deficit, and let's go back to the $400,000 item that we might agree to carry because of the, the way we divide it. Three, four years from now, the Dow may hit 20,000, and the deficit goes away.
Mm-hmm.
And, so is there anything in the process that allows us to, you know, to, in a sense, look to the future, or, or gamble with the future before we pony up the money? And if we do pony up the money, or agree to some sort of payment, I think there was a suggestion in here over the term of the, of the arrangement, which would be 10 years in terms of, in terms of the assessment. Is there some way to get a, a credit moving quicker? Because the longer we wait, the cheaper the dollars we collect will be, unless there's an inflation factor that keeps us current, and so we're, we're trading, we're trading high-value dollars going in to fairly low-dollar values coming out.
Right.
So, could we do it, let's say, in, in three years, or four years, or five years, instead of the term?
I mean, there's, Councilmember Davis, to answer your question, there's a lot of things you can do in the PERS arena. One of the things that we did, when I first got to San Carlos, for example, because we had a situation just like we have now, we had a budget deficit, but we were hoping over time we'd grow out of it, is we changed what they call our funding horizon. Instead of paying off the debt in 10 years, we changed it to 20 years, which meant that the debt was smaller in the beginning, and it was larger later, but we figured we would grow out of it, and we actually, that did work. So, that's an option, and we talked about the pension obligation bonds, you can do something like that, you can kick money into PERS, and that, of course, brings the rate down, so there's any number of ways that you, you could do that, yes.
So, that will be on the table and up for your oral discussion, huh?
Oh, yeah, and in fact, one of the comments, I think, that was made at one of the Fire Board meetings by the Belmont folks, was the observation that if you did, in fact, retire the 13 and a half million by one way or another, that the so-called nominal PERS rate is more like 18% rather than 48, so 30% of the total is really the past liabilities that Councilmember Teagle Doherty was talking about, and if you did that, then your costs going forward would be less. What you don't know, of course, as you alluded to, is if, you know, investment returns took off, you might have been better off waiting for that wave, and indeed, there are cases, as we experienced in recent years, where the PERS system does so well, that your rate literally drops to zero, or you're overfunded. And of course, under that scenario, presumably, San Carlos might say, well, if the system ever got overfunded, then we'd like some of that to come back to us as part of the amortization process. I think there's a lot of things you could do in this area.
Okay, so, yeah, I'm sorry.
Jump in here, because I, I want to see if I understand what you're asking, and it sounds similar to something that I said during one of our board meetings, which is, I, I would really like to see the assessment take care of two things. One, building a reserve fund, and number two, taking care of unfunded liabilities, the biggest of which is the PERS, and it seemed to me, and I brought this up at the Fire Board meeting, that if we could gather together a good amount of money, even, even let's say in the first year, we get that extra 3 million, and, yes, according to our spreadsheet, a lot of that is supposed to be future truck replacement and so forth, but in that first year, we could take 2 and 1/2 million dollars or something, and say to PERS, you know, knock on their door and say, hey, here's 2 and 1/2 million dollars, we're giving it to you right now. What does that do to our rate? And does that help us cash flow-wise in, in our budget, and so forth, in, in the future? And I think it would, and we asked that question of Thomas, and he wasn't, you know, he's not a PERS expert by any means, and, or admittedly, and, and he said he would have to call and ask and, and find out. So, that's something that we were looking at and intrigued by. Is that what you're driving at?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and back to the Dow, these funds are invested, and, and as the market goes up, the, you know, the, the flow of funds, or the amount of funds needed to pay is, is compromised, so.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that's, you all thinking about that.
Right, yeah, I mean, there's a variety of factors. I mean, PERS is based on how many people retire, do you have any workers comp, you know, early retirements because of an injury, then your rate goes up, if the investments go up, then your rate goes down, so it is a bit of a roller coaster, and that's why you have someone like Mr. Bartel, the actuary, who tries to guesstimate what it's going to look like over the 10-year period.
The other question I had, Brian, was on the budget, and I know it's very preliminary, and you haven't all flushed it out, but I do notice that on page two, there's an item, a new item for truck service, and, and it's a million dollars plus as years go on. What's been the practice in the past? Have we not paid for, for truck service, or is it not in the numbers in some other way?
I think the idea here was that we might buy truck service from the cities of San Mateo and Redwood City, rather than having a truck company at South County Fire. You'll recall, when we were talking about the different contract options, that the lowest-cost option was to, to give $535,000 from San Carlos to Redwood City, and another $535,000 from Belmont to San Mateo, that, that's where that number comes from.
Okay.
So, so, basically, what we're, what Chief Loudon and Mr. Phil were trying to get at is that each city said, in the perfect world, we would each have two truck companies, we, two engine companies, they would each have paramedics, versus the way it works today, where Belmont has two paramedic engine companies, we have a truck company that does paramedic and an engine company that doesn't, so it was just a way to equalize it in a cost-effective way, versus having a full-blown truck company that-
Correctly, we'd give up our truck, and we would, we would have engines and, and buy the truck service.
Let me, let me, Brian, I want to ask Tom a question, because, you know, part of the exercise here is to get some information from our full council to take back to the board. We have talked to Tom about service levels. We haven't gotten into it in detail, as I said before, and we haven't looked at the budget in detail, but one of the things we've discussed is the possibility, and Chief Loudon says this is doable, although not easy, to do a blended company. So, what we might do is have the four-engine companies and park the truck, not use it as much, but only when it's necessary, and, and we would have a blended company trained, so that they could either jump on an engine, or they could jump on a truck, depending on what was necessary for the call.
That's correct.
Because, according to Chief Loudon, you know, for the real uses of that truck, and the real kind of emergencies where it's needed, if you take paramedic off of it-
Right.
-is, you know, one in 100,000 calls.
Right, that, that's called a so-called cross-staffed option that we've talked about in the past, and the other, a part of what the mayor's talking about, is presumably you take some of the emergency equipment, it's currently on the truck, you put it on the engine companies, and then, as, as the mayor suggests, you might have the best of all worlds, because you keep the trucks, you'd have one truck, say, in San Carlos, you'd have maybe the other truck in Belmont, each city would have truck service, but the primary focuses would be on engine service, because as the mayor suggests, most of the calls are, in fact, engine calls.
And the difference is, if the engine pumps water and the truck has the ladders?
The truck, the trucks are rolling toolbox, is the way to think of it.
Is that the-
Yeah, it has the ladders and-
Is that the long one, the big?
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That's yet another option, yes.
Under the, under the budget scenario, should that happen, then this item roughly just gets put back into some other line item and nothing really changes.
Yeah, I think the chief had indicated that that, that was kind of a, a holding pattern, because I think he was indicating that even if we budgeted the million, he wasn't sure whether it would be better to buy the truck service, or to do what the mayor is suggesting, and use the cross-staff model, and that's something we would look at. I think the chief was suggesting, when I had talked to him about this, that the cross-staff might cost you a little more, but on the other hand, since you were keeping the truck and utilizing your own staff, at the end of the day, it might be a better way to go, and that, I, I certainly understand where he's coming from.
So, another item I had was on the letter of agreement. I see on the calendar that we're going to do this on the 10th, and we already got a pretty busy schedule on the 10th. So, is the 10th a day we need to do it, or is it possible to meet earlier to deal with So is the 10th a day we need to do it or is it possible to meet earlier to deal with this before we get into the field's discussion?
I would suggest that while the 10th would be ideal, since we're not going to have the numbers back from the assessment engineer till the end of April, I'm not sure the 10th is mandatory.
Okay.
That was our original rough timeline, but again, given that we're waiting on some data, you know.
I would suggest, you know, for the discussion of the two times too, that that date really doesn't work for us unless we schedule a meeting before.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And I guess the final clarification I had on the assessment, it sounds as though we're reaching a point where we will collect our money, Belmont will collect their money, and we will fund our share through our money and they will fund their share through theirs.
Mm-hmm.
And theoretically, then, this allows us, I suppose, to differentiate the dollars collected.
Mm-hmm.
We could go for a different amount than Belmont, for instance, if we chose to do so.
Mm-hmm. Yes, and I think, again, and certainly I defer to our special counsel, Joan Casman, if you'd like to hear from her, but I think both Joan and the special counsel in Belmont, Mr. Colentuano, would tell you that that's certainly the safer way to go if you want to make sure you can segregate the money and keep control of it both now and in the future.
Brian, I have a question, if I may, to jump in, Tom. If we do an assessment, and if we do it separately especially...
Right.
Then it's not necessarily being done as a South County Fire assessment.
Correct.
I've heard rumors that assessments, even though you have to put it on the ballot what the money's for, an agency can then, once the money's in, they can borrow it for other uses? Is that right?
I wouldn't think so.
Or is it, it has to go into a designated fund, a restricted fund?
Why don't you come on up, Joan? That sounds like a legal question to me.
I was hoping to hear. I was hoping the rumors I was hearing were wrong.
Hi, I'm Joan Casman. Glad to be back. The assessment monies must be used for the purposes for which the assessments are imposed.
And they have to stay in that account? They can't be borrowed or, you know, co-mingled, shall we say, with general fund monies or anything?
No, no.
No?
They must be used, and in this case, they can be used for fire personnel, salaries, benefits, or for equipment and apparatus. You have a wide range of very costly items, you know, in the environment of a fire department for which you can use the revenue.
They can't use them for like a copier for City Hall, for example?
Uh...
Maybe a field for the person.
No, no.
A question then regarding if this process should fail and we opt out or Belmont opts out for whatever reason, we still have the assessment, which would continue to flow to take care of our fire needs, whatever we arrange in the future?
Correct.
So it doesn't depend upon the continuation of South County Fire?
Correct.
It's available for us in another form?
Correct. If San Carlos is the assessing agency, you can continue to collect that money for the term that was provided and made clear to the voters when they approved the assessment. And as long as that money is being used for fire personnel costs and fire equipment and apparatus, you're fine.
Okay. So a question for the two by two. Is there any decision you need from us as you go back to your deliberations?
Well, I asked the one about truck service, how you might like to see us proceed in that area. Again, we could either continue with what we have, which is three engines and a truck, which gives us an engine and a truck, and probably the continuation of our paramedics running around on trucks. Or we could do four engines and keep the truck and so do a blended company. Or we could begin to talk about just mothballing the truck altogether and buying fire truck service from San Mateo and Redwood City, although with the latter, with that last option, I suppose we might want to put that by the emergency services council, just so it's looked at at a regional level as well. I know, I would think the region likes us having a truck, but we might want some input on that.
Yeah, I think so, although we've also heard from both Redwood City and San Mateo and, as you, I'm sure you know, they have their own budget challenges as well. They'd love to sell us truck service, so.
Yeah.
I really don't care as long as, you know, we get good coverage and perhaps it's an economic decision as much as anything.
Yeah, I would also suggest that's the sort of thing we probably want to sit down with Chief Loudon and kind of go through it with him. I mean, that's sort of a technical fire question I think he'd probably have some opinions on, I'm betting.
Okay.
I think the other items, you know, just glancing through them, we talked through the week JPA, the reporting for the fire chief, the human resources and finance being done by South County. That's a change again, isn't it?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
No problem with that. The, I just keep seeing this note about a copy of the current JPA given to fire board members. I presume you've all got that by now.
I think so. This was just the original list and I think, as Mayor Grokot indicated, they're going to go through this list soon and I suspect they're going to cross out or check off certain items and that presumably would be one of them, yeah.
I think the, you know, I think the mandatory review is good. Review of current liabilities, that's a normal thing, 50-50. We've done that. I don't see anything in here that I would object to.
I guess the direction I would like to provide is that we continue to work on the unfunded liabilities towards a 50-50 ratio. I know you've looked at the 53-47. I just, it seems to me, I feel like we're willing to accept almost being taken advantage of by Belmont in order to keep South County Fire together. And I just, I'm not necessarily comfortable with that position, especially given that we're looking out for taxpayers' money and we're charged with that. So, you know, I think we need to, at the end of the day, keep, you know, if that's what it is, that's what it ends up being. But we've gotten to that point, not because that's what Belmont has dictated and said that's the right way to do it, but that it's, it makes sense and we can go out to, I can go out to the voters with good conscience and say, no, this really does make sense and I can stand behind it.
Can you add that?
The other thing I would...
May I just comment to that, just jump in?
No. Let me just go through my, just the direction I'd like to give and then feel free to respond back.
I want to come back to that, yeah.
And then the other thing is I can't urge you strongly enough to get past this four-member board. I was just talking to actually Chief Loudon, if I shouldn't say, out in the hallway, and he said that, you know, he's got some ideas in that area as well. So hopefully, there'll be some interest in expanding to get that fifth member or, you know, an odd number of people. And the other thing, I guess, is that I would really like to encourage a little bit more focus put on this contingency plan because I think we're going to be running out of time, not just with the funding, but also, or with the assessment, but also with the overall current JPA that's in place. And I'm much more comfortable having a well-thought-out, clearly defined, here's Plan A, here's Plan B. We hope we don't ever have to use Plan B, but if we do, this is the agreement that we've reached. So I know a lot of attention, a lot of focus has been putting, what is Plan A? But I could just, really, if I could encourage you strongly to at least spend a little bit more time on, well, gosh, what is Plan B? You know, can we agree to extend this another six months under the existing JPA? Or, you know, can we agree to decide that we just can't make this May 19 deadline and so it's really, as much as we hate to do it, Plan B is we work with the existing structure for the next 12 months, which buys us the time to really do this thing right. So that would be sort of my two things that I would just like to really recommend in terms of direction.
I appreciate that. You know, just so the public knows too, we are meeting weekly on this. Every week, we are having three- to four-hour meetings on this and, you know, I mean, we all agree that we are going to keep meeting until we can't meet anymore and that means we're going to run out of time. So we're trying to approach, and I know you know we are, I'm just saying to the other people know too, and, you know, we have kicked these items around and we will kick them around again because nothing is in concrete yet. It's all, we're trying to form something. It's in clay, but it's not hardened yet and we're desperately trying to make sure that we think of all the ideas. And that's one of the reasons, like I said, we came back. We want to come back to our councils to get, because we may not think of these items. There might be something we miss, like the 63007, maybe it needs to be extended, contingency plan for B. And anyway, I just want to make sure I make those statements.
Yeah, no, you know, and please, you know, I know, I certainly appreciate the time and the dedication and the effort you guys have put into this. You certainly have, must have the patience of a saint.
Job. No, but, no, the point is, if I was in your position, I'd be raising the same questions, okay? So I appreciate the input.
Okay.
I just wanted to add that as far as the contingency plan, that's also part of, as I see it anyways, the direction we're giving to legal counsel to write the JPA agreement and writing into the JPA agreement stipulation on how we handle dissolution. And that was one of the things that was said earlier, is we've been through so much of the dissolution process, we've learned some things, let's get that written down and know what it is and be prepared for the next time, if there is a next time. Hopefully, there isn't, but just in case. And I just wanted to let Inga know that as far as the unfunded liabilities and especially with the PERS, one of the things that was stated by Board Member Warden was that if there were, if there was a component of the PERS that could be pulled out and accounted for separately, they're certainly willing to look at that as a 50-50. And when you weren't here, Tom was asking about the possibility of paying down the PERS in a major way initially. And we talked about that a little bit and one of the ideas could be, for instance, that if we raise 3 million in that first year, maybe we take 2 million and pay it towards PERS to reduce the rate.
Yeah, we don't need to solve it here.
Well, all I'm saying is if we did that...
It's really more pushing back and just kind of, and talking to Belmont. And, you know, I, again, Matt, the direction was, you know, the purpose of tonight's discussion was actually to give both members direction. And, you know, I think at the end of the day, whatever's going to come back for both councils for approval is going to have a lot of these components already worked out and it may be that another solution comes up. So rather than talk about hypotheticals or, you know, the details, I really, at this point, you know, my trust is within you and Bob to negotiate in good faith on behalf of this council because we've basically authorized you to do that, so.
I have a question for Bob, just on the, before we close this, on the has, Matt?
Yes.
Deal. I know we talked about the Fire Board, right, and the meeting with, having the political meeting, as it were, is that...
We have a meeting, the Fire Board designated Board Member Firebach, Corlin Firebach, and my, from Belmont and myself, to meet with supervisors Jerry Hill and Rich Gordon. And they unfortunately were not going to be able to meet with us this week, but we have a meeting scheduled for April 5th in the afternoon to discuss the reimbursement of these dollars, even though certainly, as Brian said, he correctly, in my mind, reiterated all the things that have gone on so far. And we're going to have a meeting to see what we can, to do to perhaps change a little of that and at least to have a face-to-face so that you don't send letters back. I'm not one for sending letters and memos and things like that. I like to sit across the table and say, here's the situation, can we work this out? Maybe we can't, but at least we're sitting across as opposed to reading the printed word. Sometimes that can be a little more harsh, even though it's not meaning to be harsh, it comes across that way. And so, anyway, the meeting scheduled for April 5th, Matt?
Good, thank you. All right, any other comments?
Sure.
Okay, that closes this item and I think that brings us to the end of our meeting, which the only thing that would leave on the agenda is public comment, if we have anyone from the public that would like to address us. And I see none.
Actually, Matt, before we close the meeting, I just wanted to bring up, I've gotten a lot of calls from residents within San Carlos who are concerned because the April 10th meeting, which is the turf issue, falls within spring break. And I know we have pushed this meeting, you know, or played with the calendar, but, you know, I just really think that maybe we ought to consider pushing this to a future meeting because there doesn't seem to me to be anything, any urgency associated with getting this done on the April 10th meeting. I know that it is very controversial within the community and it seems to me by holding it during April 10th, when a good portion of the people who would be, I would assume, proponents of turf are going to be out of town, they're feeling like they're not getting an adequate opportunity to be heard. And I think it's, this is one of those issues that's going to be really important to try to accommodate as many people as possible. So I would actually like to talk, I mean, have my fellow council members talk about that, potentially moving it from the 10th to, I guess, the first meeting in May, because I understand Barry Weiss is going to be out the second meeting in April.
I don't believe we can discuss it, though. You can comment on it, but I don't think we can discuss it because it's not on the agenda to...
Well, it's not looking for an action item, really. It's really...
Heard of legal counsel in that.
Just discussing an agenda.
Yeah.
Agendizing a future item.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, I had the same thought. Then I began to think, there's 300 other people have the same message. And if a few can't come, is that, I recognize it affects them and I, in a sense, sympathize with the way it's turned out, but I don't know that it changes the process much. But if it's our intent to give everyone and anyone the opportunity to give the message, then perhaps we ought to consider the change.
Tom, my thought isn't so much in that it would necessarily unduly influence or change the ultimate decision that's been made. Because I know, I mean, we all have gotten the letters, the emails, the phone calls, the getting stopped at the Safeways and the Starbucks, you know, all of that. I think it's really more the perception. And, you know, I really want to make sure that the perception amongst the public isn't that this was something that was done during a time when, you know, we knew that they couldn't come because it was spring break, rather than, you know, again, if there was some urgency, like the decision had to be made on the 10th in order to take it to the voters on the first week in May to, in order to, you know, meet certain schedules, I could understand that we need to stick to a schedule. But given the fact that, other than trying to get some closure on this, there's no, there's really no urgency to get it done on April 10th. There's nothing that's going to happen immediately following that meeting that is time-sensitive. And again, going back to public perception, it just seems to me that we need to, because this is so controversial within our community, we need to give equal opportunity for everyone to not have to try to reschedule their spring break plans in order to feel like they can participate in that meeting. So I would really strongly urge some consideration and thought around potentially just bumping it, like I said, to the first week in May.
Through the chair, if I could ask legal counsel, I know we're just talking about possibly doing something, but if we wanted to do something, won't we have to have a meeting to do that?
Well, you didn't have a meeting to change the date before. I mean, it was, as I understand, you know, the mayor and the city manager helped set the agenda and a decision was made with Brad Lewis out of town to change the meeting to the 10th. I think what you're doing is giving input at this...
It's providing...
...to the mayor and to the city manager and seeing where everybody is as far as, is there some...
Okay, I mean, I just wanted to make sure we're...
So we can basically kind of give direction to the city manager. I mean, we're not basically setting an agenda item, we're not acting on it, but...
You know, the reason it was changed is because Brad, unfortunately, isn't here.
Is that a chance, right?
We better call him. I mean, you know, I mean, if we change this thing, I mean, I have no, I am very sensitive to your, I have also had comments said to me and people contacted me on the date. You're absolutely correct about there's no, there's no, nothing has to get done on a certain date because there is no vote coming, there is no dollar amount here if it extends out a week or two or whatever. I just want to make sure all of us are here. So whatever date we pick, that we're all here. That's really the most important thing. And so how we make sure of that, I'm not sure. Again, getting back to making sure that we're all here for interviews and all the rest of the stuff, again, things come up in business and I appreciate that. And sometimes you just don't know that you're not going to be here. So I don't mean to lay it all at Brad's thing. It's not his fault or anything that it happened, it just happened. I'm open to any date. I'll meet anytime, anywhere, whatever time it is. The key thing is we give people enough notice so that they know what the date is and we can schedule out all those different things.
So can we give direction to have the city manager contact Brad and figure out what his, or each one of us, and figure out what their availability is for the, you know, one of the two meetings in May and see if we can reschedule it accordingly? one of the two meetings in May and see if we can reschedule it accordingly, when we'll all be in town and it's not going to be spring break?
Through the chair, I'd just like to hear what the mayor would have to say.
Well, first I just want to, since, you know, we're public and people can hear this, we certainly didn't try to do this to screw up anybody's plans for holiday break. We had the meeting scheduled for the twenty-seventh, and that wasn't going to work for Brad. We were going to go ahead with that and have a hearing and take in public comment, not take any action, and actually schedule another meeting where we would take action. And there were difficulties there. The other difficulty, quite frankly, and I can imagine the frustration of Mr. Weiss hearing this right now, is this meeting is dedicated to this subject matter. And so even when we moved it from the twenty-seventh to the tenth, we had to take certain things and move them to this meeting tonight, the items we could, and we had to take the ones that wouldn't fit here or weren't timely for tonight's meeting and push them out to another meeting. So if we do that again, we're going to, we're going to have certain topics that will have to be pushed out of the way or drawn out to another date in order to accommodate this one issue. My own feeling, I'm a little bit with Tom. I, I can understand people's vacations and break times, and I, I haven't gotten that many emails. I've gotten, I can think of actually just two, of two individuals. So unless you know more from, that came in today or something, but I also know that, you know, Christine just leaned over and told me she just responded to two hundred people confirming that the tenth is, is the date. So if we keep pushing it around, I don't, I don't know where we'll end up. But I'm, on the other hand, I'm a little bit like Bob. I'm, you know, I'm available, I'm willing to meet anytime, and this isn't something that we're going to make a decision on and then spend money the next day, but.
As Tom, as Tom said, though, I mean, for all intents and purposes, if, if, if someone can't make the meeting, and I realize it's a very personal issue for a lot of the folks, because I've gotten the emails and the calls, if Mr. Jones can't come to the meeting, hopefully he can relay his comments to Mr. Smith, and Mr. Smith can make the comment. I know, I know it's a personal thing, I know it is, but we're going to hear a hundred and fifty people, or, I mean, it's the way I think, if I, if every email shows up and there's more that people haven't, I don't know that another fifty that can't come that night or a hundred are going to tell me anything that the hundred and fifty aren't going to tell me, except that they get a chance to speak. And I, I, I'm very sensitive to that.
You know what, and I guess I'm not even considering it so much as it is an opportunity to speak, but as an opportunity to, to listen and to participate, because I think that it's going to be really important for whichever way the decision goes, one way or the other. And whatever happens on that evening, for people to feel, especially in San Carlos, because it is such a volatile issue, for people to at least feel that they were able to participate, that they, they could listen, they may choose to say something and they would like to be heard, they may choose not to say anything, because what they would have said is already being said by, you know, fifty other people in the room that share a very similar perspective. And the perspectives are very, are pretty much, you know, it's either for or against, you know? So, you know, it's, again, yeah, and I can appreciate, Matt, what you're saying. I mean, I worked with Garvey and with Mark to, to switch schedules around. It's, it's really, for this important of an issue, I, I wouldn't think that it would be that big of a deal to shuffle around some, you know, approvals or introductions of ordinances or, you know, some other things that are upcoming. I think we need to, to really, again, be able to let as many people as feasible or as possible that want to participate in the process. And for, you know, unfortunately, when we scheduled the tenth, the people who scheduled it didn't have school-aged kids and weren't looking at the school calendars to realize that it's spring break for, you know, all of, almost all of the families that have school-aged children, which really is, is a pretty huge demographic of the, of the people that are using the parks. And I think that I would just, again, yeah, if we push it out again, I don't think it's that big of a deal, and I think that the benefit of, of pushing it out and allowing those people to participate, not necessarily speak, but participate, certainly shows that, that we appreciate and we value their opinion and their involvement in the public process.
So at the risk of confusing as many as we accommodate by making yet another change, you still think that this is the right way?
I, I still think that it is, because I think that the people who really care about this are on the mailing list, and they're going to see the notifications, the email notifications. I'm sure it's going to be well-advertised by the city. If nothing else, I think that it allows that many more people to, to get involved and, and to participate. So, you know, I, again, I, you know, I wish that we had sort of looked at all of the calendars, you know, citywide when we came up with this date, and unfortunately, we didn't. But, you know, if we can just check with Brad's schedule for the first two meeting, or the meetings in May, and if he can't do either one of those because of his travel schedule, I'll drop it, we'll go back to the tenth. But, you know, just, again, I guess maybe I'm, I'm getting a, a higher percentage of calls and contacts because of, I do have school-aged kids and I am active in programs, and so people know me and they know my phone number, they know my personal email. And, you know, I just, I, I feel that I would be remiss if I didn't bring this up.
I, I do have a question for the city manager, so that all of us can hear it. Again, not that we're going to make a decision tonight, and Mark and I'll conference on this, but in May, are we going to be having budget hearings and what other big items might we have coming up in May?
I don't have the schedule in front of me, but the budget is probably the, and, and whether or not we do that with a study session in addition to a regular meeting is something we haven't determined yet, as to what we would even recommend, let alone what you would decide that you would want to do. We had talked about a number of different dates, including, and then had looked at the special meeting that we've already scheduled for the hearings on Pam.
Pam, Pam.
For the first week of April. The.
And I'm gone for that meeting. I'm traveling on business, unfortunately.
So, I mean, part, part of the issue was indeed trying to get everyone's schedule in sync for, for any date. The Parks and Recreation Director is off on, on vacation at the end of April as well. I mean, I'm sure, I, I would suspect that we would be able to find a meeting in May where all of the council members would be available. I don't know that that wouldn't conflict with summer schedules or vacation schedules that others might have after, you know.
There's nothing going on in May. Actually, school gets out the first, I think it's the first week in June this year.
And I, I simply, you know, I, I don't know, I haven't looked at the schedules for, for anything else that might conflict for another date that we would, that we would select.
Okay. Any other comments?
You know, I, I, I have the utmost respect for Councilmember Teagle Doherty, and, and I would certainly, even though I, I somewhat spoke against the changing of the date because of X, Y, and Z, this is, and she's absolutely right, arguably the most important thing that I've seen come down the pike, in the sense of the interest of, of the whole community. I am, am somewhat astonished in, in one sense that the fire thing that we're working on weekly, I have probably had two emails on, and I've had hundreds on, on the, on the turf, but that's another, that's, that's just the way things go. It is, it, the more people that can participate, the better. I, I, I agree with that. And, and, so I will, I will, I will defer to my colleague, and, and if it can be changed, I am available, like I said, May eighth or whatever, if Barry's going to be gone late April, May eighth would be the normal meeting, I guess, that we would have, if, if that's a date that we can schedule it. And I, I know Christine is probably cringing, and so is Mark when I say this, but if that's a possibility, I would be attuned to, to changing it out, assuming that our fifth member could, 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 could attend.
Thanks, Bob.
Tom, you're here, all meetings in May?
Well, I mean, you can't argue against this.
Yeah.
I mean, it's the right thing. It's just what we've done, you know, I, you know, we're getting the comment, and I think we really have no choice. But we do need to be very deliberate on picking the next date, one that works for all of us, is one that works for the community and the schools and everyone else involved. I certainly, I have no objection to postponing. I do have a question, though, for Christine. The, the emails we're getting are dropping off of my, my file space on the city email site, and are we making hard copies of those, Christine? Are we going to get them back somehow?
Yes, I've got them all captured, and you'll get them before the meeting.
A little concerned about losing them forever and not being able to retrieve them.
They're not gone forever, Mark.
I feel better now.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't mean to postpone the, the meeting till a couple, you know, fifteen minutes later, but I, I just thought, the more I thought about it and the more contacts I got, it just seemed to me that we've been accused of railroading stuff through in the past, and I wanted to make sure that that didn't happen again, so.
Well, just to be clear to folks who are watching, we haven't made a decision, and we haven't taken, we can't take action, but we can certainly take it under advisement, and Mark and I'll meet on that and be contacting Brad as well. But stay tuned, is all I can say.
Okay, great.
We are adjourned.